Yeah. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for November 19th. We'll start with the pledge. Okay, roll call? I'm here.
President.
Yes, please.
Agenda review, does anybody have any, thank you. Anybody have any changes or questions on the agenda? We're good? All righty. The minutes, we have the minutes from October 15th. And November 5th, except I don't have one. I got two November 19th, I didn't get a November 5th. Do we want to start with the older one or the newer one? 11:05? Any changes to that one?
I wasn't here, but just to note that, I guess, former mayor Cole Petro's name was misspelled, so just a minor thing.
Anything? Oh, okay, you got it? Do we have a motion then, perhaps? November 5th. No, November 5th.
November 5th, sorry.
Sorry. November 5th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 5th.
I second.
This one?
This one.
There we go.
Front and back, yeah.
All righty, and your votes? Pass is 4-0 with one abstention. All right, October 15th?
I'm sorry, is your mic on?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, on the 5th, we had the draft minutes of the 15th to reflect your recusal. Has that all been, are you okay with it?
Yes, I appreciate the changes that were made. They look acceptable to me.
Okay, so do you approve the minutes of the 15th?
Yes, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on the 15th.
Okay.
Oh, I'm willing to second that, I just wanted to make a note, sorry, on page 4. I noted that I had had a meeting, it's not Mr. Moriarty, but Mr. Erardi. E-R-A-R-D-I. So with that change, with that correction, and again to note on the previous meeting minutes that Marge Cole Petro's name was misspelled on the first page, so with that revision, I would second. Actually, I'm, I'm not.
Oops.
Okay, so I think Commissioner Wong motioned, and then I did a second, but it's flipped.
Correction.
So you just need to flip us.
With the corrections.
With the correction, yes.
All righty, your votes? Pass is 5-0. Thank you. Yes? Yes. She was not, you were not here, right? Yeah. Okay, public communication, it's reserved for persons who want to speak about something that's in the purview of the Planning Commission but not on tonight's agenda. I don't see any speaker slips, does anybody want to speak? Okay, that'll be closed. Old business, we don't have any, moving on to the public hearings. The first one is for 320 East Milbury Avenue, a design review and conditional use permit to allow the demolition and new construction of a service station and convenience store with new signage on property zone transit oriented development within the Milbury Station area specific plan. Staff report?
Thank you, good evening Commissioners. The project is located at 320 East Milbury Ave. And as you mentioned, it's a design review and a conditional use permit to allow the demolition of the existing gas station and new construction of a new service station with a convenience store. And it includes new signage at the property. The existing site is a Chevron service station and convenience store that's located between, it's on, it's on Milbury Avenue, on the northwest corner of Aviator Avenue and Milbury Avenue, between the southbound Highway 101 off-ramp and Rollins Road. The property is located on a 32,930 square foot lot zoned for transit oriented development under the Milbury Station area specific plan, under the general plan. The site consists of an existing service station and convenience store. The service station contains eight multi-product fuel dispensers, and there's a four-bay automotive repair facility that is currently not in use. The service station and convenience store was built during 1972 and has been operating in the city of Milbury for over 45 years. The adjacent land uses include the US 101 Bay Shore Freeway to the east, BART parking lot to the north and west, and Wilson Plaza Commercial Retail Use to the south. The existing building consists of the sales area, cashier area, office, utility room, men and women's bathrooms, and four-bay repair garage. There are 11 existing parking spaces for the fuel station convenience store. In addition, there is a utility easement on the west side of the lot and an existing PG&E tower that will remain unchanged. There is an attached trash enclosure located on the east side of the gas station building. So this is the location of the existing tower, it's right here, and then there's a trash enclosure building here. This is the existing building footprint of the convenience store and the four bays which are not used this time. The proposed project includes, oh, I wanted to mention, just for additional detail there, the existing convenience store is 2,350 square feet. And then there's a 2,890 square foot fuel canopy located over here, that's existing. And again, the eight fuel dispensers that will be demolished. The proposed new service station with convenience store will include a new 3,084 square foot convenience store constructed roughly within the existing building footprint on the lot, and a new 3,870 square foot fuel canopy with a new reconfigured fuel canopy, or fuel locations, fuel dispenser locations, being a total of 12 fuel dispensers. The new convenience store will include a large merchandising area, cashier area, office, sales utility room, walk-in cooler, storage area, and restrooms. The rooftop mechanical equipment will be screened with parapets. There will also be new landscaping and irrigation installed, and there's additional detail will be, will be shown here on the slides. The applicant is also updating the signage for the proposed fuel station and exterior paint color of the convenience store and fuel canopy. Three adjacent property owners were sent consultation forms with existing proposed site plans and a rendering of the proposed Chevron station. Wilson Plaza submitted a form in support of the project, and no response was received from BART and SFO, as they are the agencies that are not able to respond pro or con either way on this. But they did not, you know, express any opposition to the project. So these are the existing elevations, the front, rear, and west and east of the existing convenience store. These are the proposed elevations. Including the, the new signage which will be located here, part of the new signage. This is the new location of the building. Sorry, this is existing, this is the existing site plan. And this is the new site plan, showing the location of the new building and the parking spaces, the new configuration of the fuel dispensers, and then the new enclosure here. The project also includes landscaping, which I'll show in the next few slides. This is the signage, so there's also a monument sign, and they'll be adding signage here for the convenience store. And this is some of the detail on the proposed signage. The, the signage is part of a master sign program, so the applicant will be applying under a separate permit for that if the application is approved tonight. And this is the landscape plan, so this project does propose a number of improvements of the landscaping along the frontier. And this is part of the stormwater, San Mateo County Stormwater Program, which requires a lot of this landscaping and, and so the applicant worked closely with staff to develop this landscape plan and propose the types of vegetation and trees along the outer portions of the, of the project site. This is a rendering of the location. Staff is recommending that the applicant add vegetation that, a hedge or that's higher, like at least two and a half feet in height along here and here, and also consider adding some small trees. It would, you know, be reviewed, you know, to ensure that it, that the site visibility is adequate, but staff believes that the vegetation could be a little bit higher along the Milbury Avenue side of the, of the site. You can see the signage, the proposed new signage here, and then here for the convenience store. Oh, in addition, the applicant is, as part of their application, the store will be a 24-hour convenience store, and they are requesting that they, they're going to be applying for a alcohol permit to sell beer and wine between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. This will be in compliance with Milbury Police Department and the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control Regulations. And staff is recommending that, under special conditions, that condition be added, and also the condition to add hedges or vegetation and small trees along the landscaping adjacent to Milbury Avenue, that that be added as special condition. At this point, the staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application along with these two special conditions. The applicant is here available to answer questions also and to go through the plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Sam right now? Okay, then we can have the applicant come up.
Staff? Quick question, knowing that TOD 1 has already been largely approved, and then there'll be a hotel residential very close to this gas station going forward? Applying for liquid licenses, there is some sort of regulation associated with the incoming development?
So for, for this location, the standard practice in the city of Milbury, in consultation with the police department, is they consider gas stations, gas station convenience stores, also like 7-Elevens, Walgreens, those type of convenience stores, they, they consider them to, they allow the use of beer and wine, wine sales typically between those hours, between 6:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. So in this instance, this, this gas station is proposing hours that would, that would comply with that. And then with the, when they apply with the, for their, their ABC license, that would be like indicated on the license.
So just beer and wine, no hot liquors?
The applicants that can address more specifically on that. So here's, here's your plans here.
Oh, another question for Sam. So given the extensive plans and developments for the TOD 2 project about the bicycle lanes and pedestrian circulation, has that been looked at for integration and consistency for?
Yes, yes, a good question. The plans, staff work with the applicant, Public Works, to make sure that the proposed design for this site does incorporate the proposed future overpass, bicycle multimodal overpass going over Highway 101, it goes along the north side of Milbury Avenue. And so that, there were some revisions to the design initially to make sure that the, also the sidewalk minimum standards, all that they were all in compliance with the Milbury Station area specific plan as far as sidewalk width and setbacks, and also this bicycle, multi-use bicycle path going, crossing over Highway 101. So that was forwarded to the applicant, and they designed their plans to incorporate that in their, in their plans.
Kind of piggybacking on that. The use of one of the other roads to bicycle paths, not just over the 101, but what about, there's been some discussion about the north-south?
On which street? On which street are we talking about?
The one to the east of the big road, whichever one it is, I'm sorry. No, we're talking about north-south.
I can just have to answer that, I think you're speaking of what's called the north-south bike route that's identified by the Coalition.
I'm sorry? No. Take somebody out. Just speak up.
I'll try to speak loud. So I'll attempt to answer the question as it goes to north-south bike route. I'm not positive the north-south bike route comes up in that particular direction from the Bay Trail over, I think it's what we're speaking of, the pedestrian overcrossing that Sam was mentioning. So I'll double check on what, where that route exactly goes to Milbury. I thought it was more of a, if you were this route from the town, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it was when I was asking.
Yeah, because I, yeah, they've also been talking about a bike route.
They, they have, I know that with, in consultation with Public Works, I think some of the, my belief is at this time is that the routing from pedestrian overcrossing will likely go up along Aviator towards the, towards the car.
Right.
But I think that route's not been fully determined yet, so as far as where the city wants to place it, but the north-south bike route that's identified in the CCG, San Mateo County Bicycle Map, that's identified by the Bicycle Coalition, I will double check for you, get back to the planning commission.
And make sure that it doesn't interfere with the station.
Will do. And then I'd also have to speak to, so further tie on to what Sam said, it does in fact, we did work with the applicant, I'd like to thank them for the work of the bio-retention facilities that you guys went back and forth with us on, as well as the twelfthet sidewalk, which is the standard for the MSASG, which we were requiring now for that future POC overcrossing.
Okay, now the applicant can come up. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Davis. Commissioners, my name is Craig Schaefer, I'm with PM Design Group. I'm here with Chevron Representative Rico Sandoval and CB Richard Ellis, Project Manager, Sergio Lenares. As Sam mentioned, we've worked with staff for many months to come to this point, and I have worked on specifically on that dedication along the front of the property for the bike lane. It was a bit of a surprise to us in the beginning, but we did work with, with staff and engineering and, and worked it into the plans. And I think the section that you were talking about with the spiral and the down along Aviator, that there was no show of interference in any of the documents that we saw with our proposed driveway off of, off of that road, off of Aviator into the site. So that appears to have been okay with all the documents that we had, we'd seen to this date. So we're happy to be here, we're happy to present a project we think is going to beautify that area, take, have a new 2018 project as opposed to the 42-year-old service station that's there currently. I think it's really going to be nice with all the new landscaping and the new building and the, the architecture, and the new pole sign. We are moving the pole sign back out of that easement along the front, so, and it's actually coming down in size a bit as well to meet the, the sign guidelines. Other than that, I'm here to answer any other specific questions you have on the project. We won't be selling hard alcohol, by the way, this beer line.
Well, I just wanted to confirm with staff again that the egress is, is going to be, work the best with the fact that Milbury Avenue is extremely busy. And I just want to make sure that we've done enough research, that that's the best possible.
Yes, staff has, has researched the, the bicycle, looked at the bicycle circulation concept from the Milbury Station area specific plan, and worked directly with Public Works staff on reviewing the plans and confirmed that.
Not just?
Design that, that on Milbury Avenue will allow for the, the Bay Trail multi-use path, and also for it to be along Rollins. So the, on the Milbury Station area specific plan on page 4.11, the, it shows the conceptual proposed bicycle circulation pathways, and this was what was used in reviewing the plans.
Right, in addition to all, all the bicycle roads that need to be in there, what about in and out of the station?
Yes.
Not with bicycles, with automobiles?
Right, that was, that's correct. There was a traffic study that was done as part of the review.
Did we get that?
It's, it was, it was actually a traffic memo, so typically with memos, memorandums, we don't include those, if it was a study, we would have, but the staff report refers, mentions that memo, mentions the traffic evaluation that was done for that site. And it is actually, it is increasing some of the parking spaces for the convenience store, and they, there was also evaluation done for turning movements, both for vehicles and truck deliveries.
Right.
And the final recommendations, conclusions of the traffic memorandum was that there would be no significant impact to the traffic circulation based on the proposed project.
Not necessarily circulation inside the project itself, but?
Yes.
In relation to the traffic coming off of 101?
Yes.
The south?
Yes, that was evaluated, yes.
Okay, because, you know, it's kind of a real quick turn there, and the, and the station is right there. To a novice, it seems like there should be, or could be, a better circulation going in and out of the project.
Yeah, staff, well, staffs worked with the applicant, and there was, in order to do the bio-retention landscaping, there, there did have to be some changes to the, the design as far as the circulation, as far as where the location of the fuel dispensers, but staff believes that what's proposed actually will work better as far as vehicle circulation, because once you turn in from Milbury Avenue, you're right, there's various aisles right there where you can pull right up to the dispenser, the dispensaries, whereas now, existing currently, you have to come in and then turn to the left and sort of maneuver to get to the, to the existing site. So it's staff's belief that the circulation actually will, will improve, the design has improved from the existing condition.
Right, I would certainly hope so.
Yes.
There was no specific study or research on going inside and going and leaving egress because of the in and out is basically where it is right now, right? Pretty much?
You mean the driveway locations? You could, he can show you the plans on the, do you want to show her the site plan?
Yeah, I tried to look at it, and it was.
You could just use the arrow.
They're pretty much the same as they are right now, yeah.
So this is the existing, and then that's, that's existing, and then here's, here's the new.
That's on Milbury Avenue. So pretty much they're exact, pretty much exactly the way they are right now.
Correct, but your, the fueling canopy is located with this orientation coming in to the site as opposed to coming in and.
I'm sorry, through the, should we get him a handheld mic or something, just so?
Oh.
Your microphone. I guess the reason I'm asking this so detailed is because as things progress, we will have a lot more traffic coming off of the off-ramp, and also Milbury Avenue crossing over the overpass. And I've always wondered with the, going into the station, out of the station, is there any way that you had even looked at going out the other way? Even say, say maybe you go in on one side and the exit on the other side? Don't you butt up to the street on the other side?
On the backside? Yes, there is, there is an exit on the backside that you can go that direction and go over to the, the BART parking area. So people that would be coming in off of Milbury Avenue and filtering off that way, they can do that, they can go out Aviator on the other side and go out that back way. So there are a number of.
You know, I'm anxious to see how the feeling is with the other commissioners, but I have concerns about, because it's so close to the off-ramp that especially, I would perceive with the fact that you're going to have a little convenience store, that your visits are going to be a lot more. And I mean, hopefully you get more business, and it just, it concerns me that you're going to basically get off there right away, turn in to the gas station, and then unless you're absolutely directed to go to the exit on the back, these people are going to come back onto Milbury Avenue, which is. are going to come back onto Millbrae Avenue, which is perhaps maybe not the best circulation for our anticipated growth of Millbrae Avenue. I don't know if anybody else feels that way.
That would be discussion for later.
Okay.
I guess following on that concern, I had the concern that, you know, with the TOD two projects, there's going to be a lot more traffic and they're reducing the size for the entrance.
Sorry. What, do you have more presentation to give us before we start getting into questions?
Yes.
Because I thought he hadn't, he hadn't. Okay, that's fine then. Go ahead.
So they're reducing the entrance on Rollins Road, the main entrance. So I can foresee, following on Catherine's statement, that many people will try to cut through the facility to get into the parking lot. Is there, is there that concern right now with the traffic pattern, circulation pattern, people trying to cut through to get in the parking lot?
No, there's been no discussion about that at all.
Okay. But I see that on the new entrance for the driveway to Viador, there's kind of a circuitous route, so people can't just get right off on Millbrae Avenue off the freeway and just take a shortcut. So, so that looks well thought out. And I think that's one of the concerns I would have, because if there was a lot of short cutting, then there'd be a lot of safety hazards. And then the same thing for the other routes for the back entrance to the station. If there was like a clear drive, people getting off a freeway, cutting through and just taking a shortcut, just we should consider having, I don't know, bollards or paths so that people can't just drive 50 miles an hour through, through the lot into the back and into the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, this is obviously the first that we've heard of any concerns with that type of traffic movements. I can tell you that when we design these sites, we design them specifically around traffic patterns onsite. You know, we can't control the traffic on and off the site, but onsite, it's all about convenience and making sure that people have a pleasant experience so that they're going to come back. Yeah, I think you would have to check with the police department to find out if there have been any incidents with respect to the existing site and people leaving, coming back out onto Millbrae Avenue. I don't know that there's ever been any problems with that. I do think that the new positioning of the canopy coming in and then facing the building forces people to turn around and really get a good look to people coming on Millbrae Avenue as opposed to just filtering quickly out of their fueling position and perhaps taking that turn a lot faster than they would have otherwise. So we designed the sites specifically for convenience and circulation that makes people want to come back.
Right. So I would suggest revisiting that. I know that for the exit on Viador, you know, you can't do that because you'd have to drive around the fuel station. But you should look at making sure that there's some way or some turn or something or bollard or something so that they can't, they would have to slow down instead of cutting through to the back entrance there.
Go ahead.
Do you think a speed bump might help?
Sure. Like, for example, speed bump or other solution you consider?
Through the chair. I didn't have any concerns about people cutting through or speeding on your property at all. That was not necessarily my concern. My concern was people coming off of the off-ramp and getting into your site and then, you know, getting their gas and then merging back on. My concern was that traffic with merging back on to Millbrae Avenue when people are, I mean, if there's a stop sign, it's not so bad. But if there's not a stop sign, people are speeding on Millbrae Avenue, so they're coming right through. And I just want to, for the record, to be assured that there has been enough thought into that particular situation of you're having ins and outs on Millbrae Avenue within a block. I mean, from when you get off of the off-ramp and by the time you get to Rollins Road, you're going to have people coming out. So I just want to make sure that we have looked at that very, very, very thoroughly. Because if you went in and then exited everyone off the back road, then they're coming through back onto Millbrae Avenue at a stop sign. And then that would merge much better than coming out of your driveway and merging on to Millbrae Avenue.
Through the chair, staff had these plans reviewed by Public Works, by the Traffic Engineering Division. And there was also a technical memo prepared by a consultant that looked at the Chevron, the trip generation, trip generation evaluation. One of the functions of the Public Works is they do look at with, especially with service stations, is the traffic circulation and patterns. And they specifically requested in the memorandum study that the turning patterns be evaluated entering and exiting the station. And they evaluated the project site and they felt that the proposed plan addressed these issues, that those issues did not come up.
Except.
During the, to the planning staff from Public Works.
Exactly. Except we do expect a lot more traffic on Millbrae Avenue.
That's right, in the future, yes. In the future with the TOD.
That's fine. I mean, you know, if all of this has been checked out, I just want to make sure that we have done enough research that, that it's going to be safe for people to get into the station and then merge back on in a short period of time.
Yes. And I think Public Works, you know, throughout.
That's fine.
This process in the future, as these large projects are developed, will be evaluating how the traffic patterns and the traffic circulation is operating. And this is, this will be ongoing. So they will be able to adjust and make recommendations for traffic engineering changes to, to address these issues if they, to come up in the future.
I was kind of hoping when I saw this that there would have been a different in and out, ingress and egress that had been presented to us, but.
What, through the chair, one of the challenges was the bio retention that's required as part of their project. And so in order for them to do the bio retention, they're, that sort of limited, you know, changing driveway entryways and the circulation pattern. So they, they had, the applicant had to sort of work within the constraints of the landscaping and the bio retention that's required. So I think that, that's one of the reasons. But I believe, staff believes that what they presented and as far as the circulation and the change of the configuration of where the fuel dispensers are, where they're located, that this will be an improvement actually to the, from the existing site.
So beyond these, the question about the traffic circulation, I have a few more, so maybe we should try to hit these quickly. For the pedestrian access from the back, I don't see clear pedestrian access or walkway or sidewalk. Has there been consideration for access? Because they're going to have, you know, 400 residential units plus a lot of commercial buildings, hotel, and sort of, so pedestrians or customers that come in from the back, or is there a clear walking path for them?
Yes, that would be just beside the building. To the, to the west, there's a current walk back there. You have a ramp off of Camino.
Okay, this is sidewalk then?
Yeah, the sidewalk around is the access point.
But the main entrance would be in the front or in the side?
Correct.
Okay. So are there any signage or welcoming or the layout of the facility from the back? Is it more of just the back side of a building or is there going to be more signage and?
Well, as far as directing the public to the building, I mean, we'll have the necessary ADA signs out the, pointing them this way to the accessible entrance. But as far as any other reference to, you know, the back of the building, no.
For the, let's see, for the bio retention, Sam, you mentioned that it's a required feature for bio retention. What is the capture area for the bio retention, for the drainage or the runoff?
Overall area?
Yes. How, how does it, can you explain how this bio retention area collects the surface runoff into the facility?
Well, if you take a look at the site plan, I can't take this mic with me, I wish I could, but these areas here that are hatched all around the perimeter are areas.
You can use the mouse here.
Okay.
Use this little hand.
Okay. Yeah, all of these areas will capture the site runoff from the pavement, which is required through the state. The water is then treated through natural filtration in all these different planters. And this planter along the front, Sam had mentioned that their staff would like to see some higher plants, hedges along the front here. We'll have to work with you on those to find out what those plant types can be. I don't think there's any objection to doing that. But the, these, these are all bio retention areas that capture that surface runoff as required by the state.
Okay, so I see there's some breaks in the curb, so.
Correct.
The rainwater would flow into those breaks in the curb and go into the bio retention areas.
Correct.
Okay. What about, you know, I'm a fan for bio retention and recapturing surface runoff. What about tree planting plan? Are there any plans for trees? Because I'm also a big fan of trees and not having a sterile landscape and it gets very windy and so forth. So have you considered having a tree planting plan? Is it possible to have more natural trees?
Sure, there are trees in the, in the plans.
Okay. Maybe I missed it with just looking at the bio retention plan. Okay. And then the truck unloading for, I see the tanks on your picture there, it's to the east side. So I envision that with the circulation pattern here, doesn't look like, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't envision a big rig passing through the fuel station, but they'll probably come around from the back and park on the side on the viador and then fill up from that.
Correct, correct. He, they offload to the right. So he'll park right on top of the tanks and offload to the right and then take that path out to the driveway, the western driveway on Millbrae Avenue and exit.
So do we need to have special permitting or parking, yellow zone or so forth in order to accommodate that?
There's something that Public Works would evaluate. They, they will, if it's, if it's necessary or not, at this time, they did not call that out as a requirement. So typically, the, like, yellow zone loading, those are done along surface streets if they're needed. But within an existing site, I'm not aware that, in this situation, Public Works did not comment that that was required.
Just having them revisit that and if, you know, we don't want to, if we can direct the truck or the big rig to orient a certain way rather than, you know.
Sure.
They're not coming off Millbrae.
Yes.
Prevent accidents and safety issues.
Okay, yeah, staff can do that. We can double check that.
Has there been, you know, we really think this is great, renovating the gas station, you're going to have a lot of customers, commercial areas, the residential areas. Has there been any consideration given for more like auto shop facilities or future expansion? Is there been consideration for that? Because I can see even to benefit the city of Millbrae and the residents, you know, even having a garage or a future expansion for garage or oil changing station or so forth could be really beneficial.
No, no, no consideration. That Chevron's gotten out of that business. It's quite a competitive business, as you know. The, the mom and pop stores are kind of gone away and there's, you know, your quick loops and specialty facilities that, you know, have the smog checks and all those different things. And, you know, gotten into the convenience store and fueling business and away from, away from providing garage services.
I'd suggest for the owner, you know, thinking about that, if there's potential for future expansion and putting in bays for garage, you may have a lot of business right there. You have, you know, how many, 17,000 cars going into this facility each day? Is it 17,000? Yeah, you have a lot of traffic coming into the facility here. And let's see, I think that's it. That's the comments I had.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll comment. I just wanted to confirm in terms of circulation, because I think my thoughts were very similar to Commissioner Quick's in terms of, and I'm assuming we're going into discussion right now, because we didn't quite break it. So we went through presentation and we went straight into discussion. But, so I'm assuming we're going into discussion now. I had the same concern in terms of circulation. So just to confirm, you're going from the east-west to now a north-south, you know, circulation in there. I'm just wondering, just envisioning somebody coming in from Millbrae Avenue, trying to go there, and if the cars are backed up, trying to go into, into a lane, like if, and it's great, it's better that you have more pumps than before. But if you have, say, coming in from that first driveway, and if there are cars that are lined up behind or waiting, I can see that that can be a little bit of an issue. So did you evaluate that? Because it is a busy street, Millbrae Ave, and you don't want cars backing out into Millbrae Avenue from that.
Chevron's standard canopy design is placing the dispensers from this point here to this point here. It's 33 feet, center to center, which allows you to have someone fueling here, someone fueling here, and someone being able to come in and go through the middle and go over here and go through the middle. So you've literally got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lanes that you can go into.
So you're, in your evaluation, it was better to go this way than to go the current structure and add more pumps? So I just wanted to confirm that, because it can be a little scary, scary getting in and out of that section, so.
It offers you more, more options.
Okay.
If you're coming in with the fuel oriented the other way, you're going to slow down and hesitate because you can't see where you, you need to go. This way, you can see all these lanes open to you.
Okay. And, and you don't, you said you don't have any objections to the staff recommendation for the additional hedges on Millbrae Avenue?
I don't think so.
The two to three feet. I'm, I'm assuming they'll be relatively low because you want, if a car's coming off of Millbrae Avenue, you don't want to block the vision of what's going on in the station, is that?
Yeah. Two and a half feet is probably fine.
Through the chair, this is after Sash, to add on to those questions, are we going to talk about trees? I know Sam was talking about commission, the project, the hedge trees, as well as that's something that's just here.
Depending on the location and Commissioner Joe's, yeah. I mean, we obviously want to keep that as open as we can. So trees along this frontage, maybe not such a good idea. You know, smaller trees, yes.
Where staff was interested in looking at potential for trees was actually on the corner along Rollins. That looked like there was, there could be some opportunities for some small trees along that stretch.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to confirm that you're removing the garage, because I see that in, as part of the package, that you used to have a four-bay garage or eight-bay garage, and then now you're removing that. And then, so you're removing all the auto repair facilities?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, it's actually a good thing from my perspective. I think, you know, I think it's time to do away with this auto repair thing, especially in an area where it's, it's really TOD development primed, zoned, in fact. Not just primed. And it's actually happening, right? So, and to modernize an auto, an auto gas station facility would be a good idea. A quick question for the staff. Does the MSASP allow for some sort of a small fast food restaurant or a coffee outlet in a location such as this?
Staff have to double check to be on the, on the fast food. I do not believe it allows fast food there. Not the state, the TOD zone does not. However, I think that coffee facility needs to be, that's allowed to have the other TODs, yes.
Be nice to have a confirmation on that. So question for the applicant. I saw that you had a plan at a future EV charging station.
Yes.
Along the left-hand side of the, I should say, I should call it the west side of your facility.
Correct. Correct.
How many station are you planning there?
Just one for the time being.
Just one for time being?
Yeah.
And is it going to be a fast charging station or just a slow charging station?
At this point.
Don't know yet?
We don't know yet, but, yeah.
Okay. I just kind of want to make a comment on that. I think, you know, electric car is the wave of the future, you know, gas station is sort of a dinosaur, if you will. I think it is more than likely that we're going to have more electric car down the road in the next 10, 20, 30 years than we have gasoline vehicles, and I think you would agree with that. So having that as, not so much as just an option, but as well as a feature, immediate feature, would actually be a good thing, you know, for a gas station strategy going forward. And, you know, I think, you know, as part of the city development and that site is already happening with all the TOD development, large-scale residential projects are coming in, two projects coming in, you know, we're going to have 800-plus units coming in for construction soon, hotel, retail, office space. There's more than likely that if you have an electric car, fast, electric car charging station, you're likely to be very popular. So that would be a great feature. Tom, you want to say something?
I do, I want to add, so, the chair, I misspoke when I said about the fast food or restaurants. Restaurants are allowed, the drive-through is not allowed. So no drive-through fast food restaurants will be allowed, cafes, but regular fast food restaurants.
So like a Starbucks or Pete's Coffee, as long as there's no drive-through facility, right? Something like, you can have four tables, you can seat eight, for example, that would be?
That would be allowed.
That would be allowed. Or even a small mini McDonald or Taco Bell.
Yes.
Okay. Just indulge me for a moment. We're, I think this commission, I think in general is in, what's the right word? We'd like to see development done and we'd like to see more revenue that would benefit the city. Is it a possibility that you can consider maybe a four- to six-car charging station there along with a small, rather than just having a C-store, but also have like maybe a Pete's Coffee where people can actually stay there for 15 minutes and you can get charged on your electric car for 50% on your battery in, under 15 minutes? That would be a good strategy going in, not just for the gas station business, but as well as an opportunity for the city to get some tax revenue, if you consider that?
Well, the electric car charging station may be something for Mr. Linares here to answer. As far as the offering of food and coffee, Chevron does have Seattle's best coffee offering in the store. It's quite a large offering. Their food offering is actually quite big as well, so.
I think that plays more into your strategy as a chain, right? Rather than more automotive down the road.
Right.
Good evening, Sergio Linares, CBRE Project Manager for Chevron. So I just wanted to point out a couple, couple quick little things. So this is a Chevron company-owned site, it's not a franchisee site, so it's part of our larger program, and we have been piloting, we just started actually a couple months ago probably, piloting a new program for EV charging. So that's something that we are working with. ChargePoint is the main one that I've heard that we're talking with, it's a different division that's working on those projects. So that's definitely something that we're looking into. Actually, at one of the stations in San Ramon, which is right next to the Chevron corporate headquarters, we're also taking a look at putting solar panels at that site and adding some more charging stations. So it is new, so that is definitely something that we're looking into right now, Chevron is looking into right now, and just don't want to leap and bite off a little bit too much right up front. But we do definitely have plans, especially, you know, in Silicon Valley area, back up here in the Bay Area. We know there's a lot, lot of demand for vehicle charging stations, so that's something that it is near, you will start seeing at some of our sites.
So what I'm hearing is, it's a possibility?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more. So another question, and perhaps you're the better expertise on the food industry.
I'm an expert in food.
I also envision, and I don't know if you have, I'm sure you have thought about it, but maybe even the residents in the area, you know, there's going to be a hotel there also that will be popping in because you would be the nearest location. Is it easy to get to your, say, mini mart from the backside? Not from the, not from the Millbury Avenue side, but say even someone from Aviator that needs a quart of milk or something? Have you taken that into consideration at all?
You know, we've been focusing so much on the Millbury side with that, with the bike path and the new access out at the front on Millbury, that it looks like that's going to be the primary access for pedestrians. I haven't focused too much on the rear of the building. I do see that we do have
Yeah, it doesn't look that.
the sidewalk back here that provides access to the site. But I, honestly, I'm not sure exactly what else happens beyond our site. I'm not sure what the development to, right next to us, what their plans are for.
Well, it would probably make sense for both you and the development that you take that into consideration, because not only is there going to be a hotel there, and it's not going to be full service, so those people may be needing something without having crossed Millbury Avenue to go to the other stores. And also, there's going to be veteran housing there that's going to be right, very close to there, that I would tend to think it would be better for you and perhaps even for the city of Millbury, that you're much more accessible from both sides. So I would strongly recommend that we
Yes, I would. There's going to be a big hotel right in your backyard, so if they just see the back wall of a building and they don't know there's a lot of convenience store opportunities, you know, it's good to have that advertising.
And I've been in the, those extra mile stores, and there's really quite a bit. And so I would think it would behoove you to try to capture that, and I'm not quite seeing it in the design right now. And I totally agree with Commissioner Fung that I would not approve this without at least five charging stations, because there's going to be a lot of people.
I'm sorry, I have to just disagree with all of that. I think we're getting into where we're micromanaging how people do their business, and there is a certain amount that we need in terms of design review and circulation, and I get all of that, but they have the plans here for the driveway on both the east and the west side. They're trying to improve what's already there, so they're not adding something that's new. And I think, starting to tell them, you know, we want this kind of food there, that, I don't think that's what we're here for as a planning commission, and I don't think that the chargers right now, there's, the way that is, yes, electric is the way of the future, I just don't think that asking for five charging stations right now is, I don't know, for me, it's not enough to say I'm not going to approve, I'm just not getting it right now because, you know, they're trying to improve a station that's already there. And I think, holding that up because we want to make sure we have five charging stations or four, or four, whatever the case, I'm just saying, I don't know if that's, I feel like we're getting a little too much right now in terms of, like, you need to do this kind of food, that kind of food, build a, I mean, I think we're kind of overstepping or we're going into a lot more detail than we should as a planning commission. That's my thought.
And thank you very much.
I feel like we can't go anywhere, nobody can go anywhere if we do this, you know, with every project and
I guess I'm just looking for the best for Millbury and the best for the Storsham Station. And as he said, he wasn't really quite sure about all this development. I'm not going to hold up anything, but we have held up projects where they work with staff to make sure that there is more charging stations or to evaluate the whole project based on what else is happening in the neighborhood. If they have looked at all that and they definitely feel this is the best for them, that's perfectly fine.
I mean, there's a, there are driveways on both east and the west sides.
Yes.
There is a pedestrian access. I don't think it's that difficult for somebody to figure out that there is a convenience store there, and, you know, even though we have the projects going up, the idea is that it's close to a multimodal transit station, so we're not trying to increase traffic there in terms of cars. So I just feel like we're, again, I don't know, I'm, you know, and adding on charging stations is not that difficult to do later, I would think, because you do have the parking spaces, they can adapt it as they go. I'm, you know, I just, I don't know, I feel like we're kind of going on and on about all the little details of, I don't know, even going into, again, coffee or what kind of food, I think we're overdoing it. That's just my humble opinion.
Chevron's business isn't charging stations, you know. They would have to partner with a ChargePoint or EV Go or one of those other organizations. So it's not as easy as just saying, okay, we'll throw in a few charging stations here. It's kind of a long process to get that done.
If I may, do we have any more questions for the applicant before we close the applicant session so that we can go into discussion, so we can talk about all those things? Any other questions for the applicant? If I may, through the chair?
I have one more comment too about the color scheme.
At least he can sit down.
Have you looked at the TOD 2 site plan? Obviously, it sounds like you haven't looked at the TOD site.
No, we have, but just not in a lot of detail because it's, we have no say or
I guess the question, the question is, is that the color scheme should not clash, and so maybe have your architects or your designers check for the color scheme to see if it doesn't clash or it matches.
Through the chair, staff did look at that, and looked at the proposed color scheme of the hotel, and the color scheme that the service station and the convenience store has is similar, it's sort of neutral, like beige coloring, and so staff took a look at that. Staff also looked at the site plan and looked at the proposed developments for the TOD 2, the Gateway Station Area site, and the developments are about a block away to the west of the Chevron station. They are complying with the setback requirements and the sidewalk requirements for access from the, from the back of the, from the street, I believe it's called the Camino, Camino Millenial, yes. So they, they do have that access there. The, directly behind the convenience store building is still a parking, a parking lot. Perhaps in the future that would be developed, but at this point, it's a parking lot in the, directly to the rear, but then, you're correct, Commissioner Quigg, there will be the Veterans Building and the hotel about a block, one to two blocks west and north of the site. So they will be able to access the convenience store through the, along the sidewalk and access from the rear to the site.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, making sure it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. Okay. Okay, so we, no more questions? We didn't, we do have any speaker slips? We didn't, we just blew right past that. Does anybody want to speak on this project? Okay, so no public comment, that's closed too. All right. Thank you for now.
Thank you.
So, discussion?
Well, I am glad to see that it is going to be upgraded. I just want to make sure, and I'm asking staff to double-check that all the incoming cars and outgoing cars are safe for all of the new projects that are going to be coming in there. I would also like to say, I think it's important that it is important for, right now, there's nothing else there but the service station, so I do think it's important that that be considered. And in other times when we have talked about charging stations, whether, and yes, they have to pair up with someone, but we have recommended that they prepare so it makes it easy for everyone if they needed to add charging stations. So, a lot of things to think about.
Coming to think about this, I mean, I spent a little bit of time thinking about this project before coming in. I think we, as planning commission, it's in charge of guiding the development of the city down the road, right? And we should address a lot of these issues in our MSASP, general plan, and how we guide the development of the city, how and what gets developed in the city. And that's why we have the MSASP for that whole area. This is a, the gas station itself, I think it's a, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, it's a non-conforming use? Is that correct?
It's a, see, it's an existing, under, so under the previous plan, it was a permitted use with a conditional use permit.
Right.
With the Millbury Station Area specific plan, it's considered an existing non-conforming use. And in the Millbury Station Area specific plan for this type of use, if it's existed prior to the adoption of Millbury Station Area specific plan, then it reverts to, refers to the, our general plan, which allows an existing non-conforming use to continue operating at that site. And as staff mentioned at the beginning of the, in the presentation, this location has been a service station, a convenience store for 45 years. They've done some modification improvements and renewed the conditional use permit, and staff in evaluating this site, its location right near Highway 101, the exit to, the off-ramp exit, and the service that it provides to the automotive users felt that this was a use that, that should be permitted basically as an existing non-conforming use and go through the process for a design review and extending the conditional use permit and the Millbury, and also the master sign program, and bring that to the planning commission for your evaluation.
Fair enough. This is the way, how I feel about this. This location, it's sort of an iconic location. This is the first thing you see when you get off 101 freeway. You know, arguably, when you get off the 101 freeway, looking at Millbury, this is the first thing you see on the right-hand side. Right? So there's a certain amount of image of the city here as well for that factor, that we need to make sure that this particular site gets developed in such a way that, that fits the future of the city. Now, having said that, it is a non-conforming, previously permitted use. I'm not advocating that we should tear it down and do a, you know, 65-foot high-rise here. What I'm saying is, whatever gets redeveloped, and it's, in this case, it's going to be an automotive, you know, gas station-type outlet, it should be allowed to be used as such, but I guess the development of that site should be developed in such a way that takes us into, let's say, 30, 40 years, you know, with the anticipation, knowing that what's the future going to be and how it would fit in to the overall development of that site, given what has already been approved on TOD 1 and TOD 2, knowing that there's going to be a hotel, there is going to be 800-plus units of housing, new retail, the amount of people that's going to go in is going to be exponentially more than where it is today. It is true that it is It is true that it is, we're going to have, we're going to see more electric car in the future than we do see gasoline vehicle in the future, so having that would actually make sense from my perspective. I don't know the exact timeline at which that should be implemented, but I think it would make sense to have it. Having the extra, one of my original proposals earlier about having, in addition to a convenience store, but also having either a coffee outlet or a small fast-food restaurant, first of all, I think it is a reasonable approach to have such an establishment, given that you're going to have a charging station there, because you've got to give these people something to do for the 15 minutes that they're charging their car. Second, it is a revenue generator for the city, for tax revenue. Third, it actually plays into the gas station business that they, because I've been seeing a lot of gas station that being developed or redeveloped that has these additional food service outlets, whether it's a small taco store or a coffee stands. So, I think it is a reasonable thing to do, and it would actually modernize that whole place, and it fits into the overall development going down in the future. So, that's what I would see as a reasonable development, given that they're asking for a conditional use permit rather than by right that this is what they can develop, okay, based on the general plan being set forth.
So, my view along with that is that this is part of the TOD special, TOD development area. And as such, you know, there's many other facilities, multi-use developments, residential, like you mentioned, hotel, business properties. I could see that, you know, this is almost like a minimum development, that if you had greater plans for this, you know, what's allowable within our TOD area, the key is that we're trying to develop a living environment, a live-work space, and there's other five-story buildings going up next to this. So, if you're able to even expand on this, what's allowable by our TOD permit, you know, can they even go up higher or bigger or more massive to provide more live-work area for this project? The whole Bart Station project is envisioned to be in the future, you know, the housing development and commercial developments, and that it's supposed to be its own, you know, live-work area, so that as part of a courtyard, we want to provide a living environment where people feel like this is part of that development, that there's access, that there's shops, that there's businesses, that there's a place for the people that live there and stay at the hotel can go to. So, that's why it's critical that it's seen more on the backside as a place, as a commercial place where it's integrated with the rest of the station development. And for the TOD project, I mean, what is this, is it allowed within the TOD plans to even have higher or second-story or more commercial spaces? It probably would be a lot, take a lot more planning and EIR and so forth, but I would see this as like the minimum development that's, you know, what we would want to do is we want to develop and grow our city. We want to grow and develop this TOD area. We want to be a live-work area and a commercial area that addresses the people that live there and the hotel residents also. So, that's why it's critical, again, just to develop the backside so it looks integrated into this new community.
So, would that, I'm sorry, but through the chair, would it help if you have additional signage, at least toward the side and the back? Would that help a little bit? In terms of what Commissioner Wong is saying?
Me.
I'm saying, because right now, there's no sign plan on the sides, the west side of the building, right? Would that, would that help to, to add more signage?
The north side.
With the door, probably security might be helpful because this is part of a bigger development. You may have more people, like you said, there's bike and pedestrian paths, as well as this big Bart Station transit development, so there's going to be a lot more crowds and hotel people visiting, and to make it more accessible, have signage, have access doors, it's up to your development, but we'd like to have it integrated into that TOD community.
I'm going to go now.
Please.
Not we, we haven't made a decision at all. What Commissioner Joe said, I'm agreeing with. This is a design review, not a business plan review. This is an existing gas station that is going to be improved with a retail outlet. It is what is there now, and it's what you need next to a freeway. There's going to be hundreds or thousands, I don't know, cars right parked right there and coming off the freeway. We still need gas stations, yes, electric vehicles will come along eventually, and when it makes sense for them to have more chargers, they will have them. As their business model will have to evolve, their stations will evolve. But an electric vehicle station doesn't make, to Commissioner Quigg's thing, we ask for infrastructure for electric vehicles' charging stations in residential developments, not commercial.
We did in the downtown.
In a parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's a parking lot, not a, not a retail store, not, this is a retail outlet. They are selling gas, and they're selling the items in the convenience store. One possible station they're thinking they might want to put in now, if they need more later, they'll put in more later. But that's not our job to tell them what to do and how to run their business and what kind of food to serve. There's a big giant tall sign, is there not, on one corner? I think the hotel can see that. I think the people in the veterans' housing will be able to see it. I think they're going to know that there's a convenience store there if they need to find it. They've just, many of them have just come off the freeway and driven right past it. I mean, when I come off that exit, I mean, yes, I see the gas station, but what I see are the beautiful hills of Millbrae. And when Gateway gets built, we're going to see a beautiful project there. That's going to overwhelm your gas station. People who need gas are still going to see you, but that's going to be the grand entrance to Millbrae. It's not the gas station. The gas station colors are quite neutral and quite pretty. There's nothing that's going to clash with, that's being built at Gateway, as far as I'm concerned. And like you said, it's a block away, at least from, in either direction, from any structure that they're building right now. I think it's a beautiful design. That's all I got.
I, I agree with what you're saying. However, I think it is important that there be more thought to the whole development area there on how to, all of it to come together. I mean, we've got the other plaza across the street, and there's a lot going on, and the gas station is fine, but I think that it needs to be integrated a little bit more with what the surrounding is going to be. I'm sorry, feel that way.
Can you explain?
Such as having the north side, because that's the other side of it, be inviting or whatever you want to say, to the whole development. I mean, we're having other people show what their development is going to look like with other developments. No, I'm not telling them how to build their building. I think the colors are fine, but I think it would be a little bit more inviting if there was a little bit different integration on the other side, rather than just a...
But it's a parking lot.
For right now, it's a parking lot. We hope it's not going to be a parking...
No, that's the parking lot. That's the parking lot that's behind. There's still going to be a parking lot.
Right, but there's people that may want to walk that way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
But there's probably never going to be a back door. That won't work, probably.
Or better signage so that there's a way to get in there.
So, that was what I was asking before, is that if there could be a sign just on that store, convenience store that's facing the east, the west?
It would make it look a little bit more like...
To make it more inviting, maybe, is that something that would help? Because, and that's not that difficult to do, right? To put...
Directional signage?
Either directional signage, or you know how you have that extra mile sign that's on your rendering here in the front, facing the pumps, toward the, facing south? If you have an additional, right there, yeah, if you were to add some nice signage there, there's going to be landscaping there, right? So, maybe that's what would help, is that, what, I mean, when you say integration, I think it needs to be, it needs to be a little more concrete in terms of, are we saying we want to have a sign there? Is it that you want to have it be all glass around it, like McDonald's was? Or, so that's, I think it's important to kind of define what that means when we say integration, because that's, that's really hard for, you know, they haven't been here with TOD 2 and one with us, so, so I think it helps if, you know, because the colors are not the issue, right?
No, colors are, to me, the colors are fine.
So, if there were signage, if there were more windows or something on that side, is that what would help?
I don't know so much about the windows, but more of a, so that if somebody is in the parking lot, they feel like they can walk over there and make it a little bit more inviting for someone on the other side to walk in, from the backside.
So, this is the backside of the building right here, the lower elevation. So, we could take a look at placing some signage on the back of the building there. And then this is the left side of the building, I'm not sure of the orientation, facing the other development, TOD, I guess that's what we're calling it.
That's the west side?
And there is, again, there is that sidewalk on the back of, of the site for access. So, if we were to place a sign back here, that would be seen by the parking lot.
Right, but from that sidewalk, is it easy to get into the store?
You can walk along the sidewalk to the front of the store, yes. If you take a look at, you know, this is the back, this is the interior of the store. This is your front door down here.
There's only one entrance?
Walk-in cooler, correct. And there's a secondary egress by the restrooms. So, as far as coming in through the back of...
No.
...the building, it's, just doesn't really work.
Yeah, that was just the suggestion, because I guess to elaborate on what Jean was saying is that, for example, if you have an outdoor mini-retail mall, outdoor mall where people walk, and then there's shops and storefronts in commercial establishments that are facing the parking lot so people can walk into the shops, then your shop has the back-back, you know, wall facing that mall. So, in order to develop that live-work area, you can try to take more steps so that it's seen as like a storefront or attracts business, and all the people from the hotel and the veterans' building and the people that park there can see that and feel like this is the storefront they can walk to.
They wouldn't have to cross all the way on Rowan's Road.
Well, we could, we can add signage on the rear of the building to...
I mean, what they did with the McDonald's down here is they turned it around somehow, but...
If you turn it around, then you...
Then it's going to mess the front. I got it, I got it. Yeah, yeah. Well, I think you can work with staff and see if there isn't something you can do to make it a little bit more inviting for the people from the backside. The people in the hotel, the veterans' building, they may choose to walk this way rather than to go into the development because it's on the other side of a large street.
Right. Okay.
And I mean, it's far from Avia Door, but it's not that far away. It's still easier than getting into your car and going all the way to downtown, especially since they don't want us in cars anymore. I'm thinking of a walking path or a bike path. And I just want to clarify, so it would be non-conforming legal?
It's existing non-conforming use.
Even with all of the changes, see, I understood when it's legal non-conforming, it has to be that way?
No.
Okay.
It's an existing use, and they're doing an improvement to the site and, you know, requesting a design review and a conditional use permit to continue that use.
Okay. Yeah. And I know we need gas stations, that's not the issue. I, I'm just concerned with the traffic on Millbrae Avenue.
And my colleague also mentions that typically with a conditional use permit, that runs with the land.
I would like to clarify for Mr. Quigg's question earlier. And so, what I want to get back to you on was the, your question about the north-south bike route. I did double-check the map that we had done, we had CCAG back in 2008, and I do recall speaking with Ron Pope, the prior Public Works Director here, and it does not appear that the north-south route is mapped from that overpass where the pedestrian overcrossing was. As a matter of fact, the city of Millbrae was very specific about it, and they wanted to go up Magnolia. Magnolia Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Does anybody have a motion?
I can try.
I think we're not very clear on where everybody is, so which motion to do?
I think we've all talked about it, and I believe in property rights, so it's not like I want to not let you build or anything like that. I would approve it with some modifications, better signage from the backside, and walkways, so that's maybe a walkway from the sidewalk. And I'd be okay if they worked with staff to come up with a little bit better integration with the back, with the hotel and the, and the veterans' building on that side.
So, Commissioner Quigg, do you mean the back meaning the north side or the side facing the developments? So, that would be the west side? Or do you mean both?
Both would be great, but I see there's bathrooms there, so that's not going to work. But just so long as, the way they have it right now, it's kind of like, this is where we are, and nobody come in here unless you're coming in to get gas. And I've seen these extra miles, and there's a lot of benefit to them that would benefit the surrounding areas. And I'm willing to allow staff to work with them, to see what they can incorporate to make it so it's more user-friendly with the developer, with the other side.
There already is a sidewalk. From the sidewalk in the parking lot side, there's already a sidewalk that comes...
I understand.
...on the side of the building. So, you're saying integrate it, so we're going to put some more signage on the back to say, hello, we're here, but what else do you, but I'm just curious, I don't understand, what do you mean by work with staff to integrate it?
Well, if I was a designer, it would be different, but I'm just...
Well, no, but what, just, even just some notions, do you want, is it, what is it that's not inviting? There's a path, so what else could they do? Is it lighting? Is it, I don't know, I'm sure it's probably already well-lit. I mean, but what, what, work with staff to do what? How would they modify the design, any of it, other than putting signage?
I don't know. Maybe they can put a door someplace else.
We know if it got improved.
Just as a suggestion, then, the left side, meaning the side, again, faced, on the west, facing the developments, is that possible, just asking the applicants, is that possible to make that window, you know, at least the front part of it, windows, and then have the door be glass, that exit door, so that that would look kind of like also an entrance? Maybe that's what would help? Because right now, if you look at left-side elevation on A10, these sheets, it just looks like a block, so I think that might be, I'm just trying to figure out what, so this left side, if it could look a little more like the top, the front side, maybe that would help alleviate it. A10?
Right, I'm just...
Is that something that would be feasible?
So, I mean, we could possibly do some mandrel glass, so it looks like glass.
But it's not.
But it's not. But, you know, obviously, you can have glass and see the restrooms there, and then you've got a storage room there on that side as well. We could also, there's this landscape right here... We could also, there's this landscape right here, possibly add some landscape. Oh, do I have that? A-10, do I have A-10 here? No.
If you could do the spangled glass outside of the, I see it's where the restrooms are, and then the alcove, if that could be like a glass door that looks a little more inviting for people to come through?
That's an emergency egress.
Oh, I see, so it's not a general?
Right. And then...
But if, or it could look like a glass door and just have emergency, so you can't really go through it, but it looks at least more better than a block, which I think people are objecting to. Does that make...
I have a question.
I haven't seen that on, on the, on the egress door before, but, I mean, on the elevation, we could do some type of spandrel glass here possibly. And then we've got the roof access ladder, where we could probably do some type of landscape, some climbing vines possibly on either side of the ladder.
Is, is, is that something that would be...
And I just thought of something else, too. We had in another situation where there's a blank wall like that, because you're going to have two black wa, blank walls, having shrubbery next to the building and something growing up so it doesn't look like a blank wall when you're looking at it from the hotel, that it can look a little bit more attractive. I mean, I know they're all kind of built the same way and, and it's... So you could have something that would soften the back of the building, so it would feel like...
Yes, we could do that.
And, and put, it's, um...
Trellis along the back of the building and along the west side of the building, so along the north and west side of the building.
And then maybe even something simple as the, like I mentioned, signage or logo, and then also just like entrance with an arrow, so that attracts people to the entrance.
Directional signage on the west side of the building.
Yeah, because, you know, when you look at the inside, they're all kind of built the same, and there's no way to really change them. I know at the McDonald's, they flipped it all around for us, but I think it would just soften it, make it feel like it's not a commercial building.
We will add that to be designed.
I mean, if you could have two doors, it would be nice.
That's more difficult to do.
I've seen, even on commercial buildings like yours, I've seen all kinds of changes being done in different areas.
Yeah, in order, I mean, in order to have the offering that is expected by the customers by this type of store, you know, it's a particular layout, just like when you go into a Target, you always seem to find your, your way to, you know, the items that you're looking for because it's all the same supermarkets, everybody's like that. Anything that's a larger chain.
Yeah, I, I definitely feel that a lot more could be done with that lot, but it's yours.
But, yeah, we can add some landscape trellis-type feature to the north and west of the building.
Could you, you know, even, even if there's not windows that open up, that there could be something on the back that looks like windows?
That's the spandrel glass that I mentioned earlier.
Oh, anyway.
I think the landscaping would look better than fake glass, personally.
And they would have, and you would have to take care of it.
Yeah. No, I mean, you mean the, the landscaper? Yeah, that's not, we have landscapers, that's fine, it's not a problem. And also directional signage on the west side of the building.
So would that be sufficient?
About the logo or the signage on the backside of the building also, too?
We could add the extra mile sign, building sign to the rear of the building if the sign code would allow for that. Typically, from my experience, pad buildings only...
I would actually approve for more signage than you need to make it look better.
It's their call.
So through the chair, keep in mind that this is the master sign program and there's signage, total signage area requirements. So staff will check that when the sign application comes in to make sure that any additional signage still meets the signage area requirements.
So would that be sufficient then, if we can...
Subject to the conditions?
Subject, subject to the, those conditions.
Can I make a motion to approve?
No.
So Kathy, is that a motion?
I did make a motion, and I would make sure that staff...
Can we confer? I would need my friend to...
Yeah.
Okay. Did you write that to him? What could we do?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so basically, what I had was that the applicant had agreed to, basically, what the planning commission, through the discussion that I'd asked for, that recommendation was to add shrubbery, so that the applicants that they would consider shrubbery were allowable in the bioretention facilities.
You need, sorry, the mic.
And so as stated through the discussion this evening with the planning commission and the applicant, for additional conditions on the project tonight, what will be discussed is adding additional shrubbery where appropriate and where allowed in the bioretention facilities or along the sides of, of either the, both sides of the property, east and west. Also softening potentially on the, softening through landscaping it is, potential trellises on the rear and west sides of the building, or the north and west side. The spangling, I believe, was not agreed to, from what I understood, or that you were disagreeing with, I think, the overall aesthetic of the spangling. However, the wayfinding or directional signage would also be, would be provided, as well as, I believe you said, additional signage for extra mile to let them know that there was a facility for them to utilize at the hotel or the adjacent Veterans residential building.
And sufficient lighting?
That is not happening.
Okay.
I believe he suggested the spangling on the side of the building, but not on the back of the building?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure. I was, I'm sort of articulating back what I heard the applicant agree to, based upon what the request was, and so I would, I heard him say different on the spangling myself, but...
Just to be honest, I don't think you'll get the look that you want. If you take a look at it here, so this area right here is in the landscape planter, you've got your roof access ladder here.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic?
Sorry. On the west side of the building, you have your in-ground planter here where we're proposing the additional landscape to soften the building. And you have your rear, your emergency egress door right here, so the spandrel glass would be limited to this area behind the restroom, women's restroom, and this area behind the men's restroom. So if you take a look at the elevation, it's going to be a small piece of glass right there and right there. I don't think it really adds any benefit to it, to the building, and if anything, those tend to age, especially when exposed to light, you know, within a couple of years, just doesn't look good and it's hard. Really, the only way to maintain it is replacing it every few years. I don't think it would add any benefit.
No, because it's just going to be an emergency door, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly.
There's no way you could make it a regular door.
No. Yeah, so the landscape would be along the back right here.
Okay, so landscaping and signage and all spandrel glass.
Right. That's, that's my recommendation.
And something that goes up on the, on the wall.
Yes, that's the landscape.
Can we get clarification, can we get clarification for staff with the lighting? I wasn't sure that we had heard correctly what the, what the request was in relation to the sufficient lighting in the rear?
I think it's just that that path from the backside is well-lit. If it's going, if you're pointing people, come this way, come this way, just make sure there's plenty of light.
We have safe and sufficient lighting for where the wayfinding directs them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would comply with building code, I guess.
And then the wayfinding sign to show where the entrance is. I heard that.
Yes.
And then I believe... Also for your, for your signage for your establishment, too, on the backside.
We also had the special condition for the alcohol license, they're talking, so...
Wait.
They were going to add that as a special condition. We also needed a special condition for the alcohol license, is that, I think that's what staff said earlier, so to add that as well.
I think that was in there, wasn't it?
It's not in this, it's not written in there right now.
Staff, staff will add that, the special conditions for the beer and wine sales from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, and then for the proposed additional taller hedge landscaping on the landscape areas along Mill, Millbury Avenue and Rowland's, the corner.
Then also conditions for minimizing the speed or through, through fair traffic through, from the front entrance to the back entrance, either speed bump or other, look into other ways to slow down traffic.
Through the chair, Commissioner Wong, staff can, can take that recommendation or suggestion to the Public Works, and they'll, they'll evaluate that and make, see if that's, if that's a feasible suggestion.
And then also the parking area for the big rig unloading on Aviador, also.
Okay, yes, staff can take that to Public Works to evaluate.
Okay, do, do we understand the motion? Is there a second?
I think we do have the, the special conditions regarding what Commissioner Wong just mentioned, that's more just a suggestion, Public Works, and not really a, a planning commission specific condition, right? I, I just want to make that clear. So that's just, I mean, I definitely think having Public Works involved is always good, but it's, I don't think that's, needs to be a condition of the approval. So with that, I would second.
Yeah, and staff.
Four yeses, one no. Is this standard 10-day appeal? All right. Those people have been waiting a very long time. Those people have been waiting a very long time. You have to? All right. I'm sorry, we're going to take a, a three-minute break, and then we're going to move on to 311 Paramount. Okay, if we're ready, we're going to move on to 311 Paramount Drive, a design review to allow the addition and renovation of an existing two-story split-level single-family residence and floor-area ratio exception, allowing more than the maximum allowable square footage in a single-family residential zoning district. Staff report?
The applicant for 311 Paramount Drive is requesting design review to allow for the addition and renovation of an existing two-story split-level single-family residence and a floor-area ratio exception, allowing more than the maximum allowable square footage in a single-family residential zoning district. The project site is located in central Millbury, approximately one south, one block south of Cappuccino High School. Paramount Avenue is an east-west oriented collector's street connecting to Magnolia Avenue to the east and Barcelona Drive to the west. The existing residence located on a 6,080 square foot interior lot was built in 1949 and is described as a single-family, two-story, split-level structure. The existing home, including a one-car attached garage, is a single-family residential and identified in the general plan as a low-density residential. The existing site contains a two-story split-level, single-family, 1,744 square-foot house with an existing garage, half-bath laundry room, study, kitchen, full bathroom, living room, closet, and bedroom. The project would add approximately 2,212 square feet to the existing rear of the lot. The existing site is encumbered by a 20-foot easement held by the City and County of San Francisco Water Department. Because the easement restricts the development of the site by reducing the overall developable square footage, the applicant has requested an ex...
Unless I'm reading something wrong.
Yeah, I was very surprised, 'cause I just wanted to make sure.
And, and I kept thinking, how could it be this much? I, I'm on a 5,000-square-foot lot, and I've got about 24, and I'm at max, using up the whole lot.
So, is there any clarification, or should we just move on, I mean, just?
No, I think we can't.
Just note that.
Well, this is the first I'm hearing of this, so I would like to go back and check that. It could be just a, an error on staff's part. We did review that and found that sixty, the, the 52% was, if we did add back in, if they, if they weren't encumbered by the, by the-
Easement?
By the easement, thank you, then they would still fit within their requested FAR. That's why we felt that it was, it was a reasonable-
But I'm saying that 52% is wrong, because-
That's what I'm saying, this is, if, when we did our ca- when I did the calculation before, that's why we felt it was a reasonable request.
Okay, so somehow that 52%, I mean, I would understand that, but then, again, I was looking at it going, "That looks weird," and so that's why I checked it.
Since I'm just hearing about this, I would like to take a little more time to review that. Staff can do that. The other item that I would like to consider too is to make sure that the, the numbers that we are using are consistent with what the county has. Typically, the county does not include the garage, which is floor area that the City of Millbury calculates, but the county does not, so I wanna make sure that I'm, I'm looking at the correct numbers.
I, I agree, but to- totally, for that size lot, we've not, even without any easements, we haven't had anything with that many square feet.
Right.
So, I can see that, that, that may be an issue.
Well, when you remove the easement area, it, it affects the overall FAR numbers, so that you have less square footage to calculate.
Oh, of course, of course, but even if it was totally 5,000 square feet, which is the normal size for lots, and I think this is six, though, wasn't it?
It was six, six thousand eighty.
Lot area is 6,000.
But if you, if you remove the, the easement area, then you're only left with 4,781, so we still have to build within that, that area.
So, to clarify, the, the easement is owned by the property owner, is part of the owner's property, it's not part of the PUC?
The easement is owned by the P, the Water Department. The property is owned by-
So, then their lot really isn't, it really is not the total, including the easement, it excludes, the total lot size includes only the property owner and not the-
And where, sorry. They own, the owners, homeowners own the property, and easement goes across it, right?
Right.
PUC, or who is this, Water Department, who is it?
So, if I'm-
They don't own the land, they have the right to go across-
The PUC holds the easement.
Not the land.
If I, if I can try to take a crack at it and try to answer Commissioner Wong's question, the property owner owns the land, the entire land, owns the entire 6,000, 6,080 square feet of land, although the San Francisco PUC, San Francisco Public Utility Commission, which is the Water Department, own a piece of easement, a 20-foot right-of-way, effectively invalidating the, the development on that piece of property-
Right.
On that 20-foot. Easement is a piece of legal, you know, it's a legal description, there's a piece of property rights for the PUC, granted to the PUC, for use of utility underground, if that makes sense.
You can't build over it.
And you cannot, you can hardscape over it, but you cannot build a structure over it.
Right.
So, the, the main question is that, that, that piece of property can be included in their total lot?
It is their lot, but it's indevelopable.
I, I, through the chair, I have one more question of staff. I took a picture today from, you know, from the street. It does, and, trying to get to where I'm trying to say here, this shows that there's a four-degree slope downward or up on the new site plan. Is there, when you go in this garage, it's all straight, right? I mean, it's all level?
Correct. Yes.
Level.
Yes.
So, are they gonna, that's gonna be their first floor?
That is-
Where the garage is?
Yes.
But then, what are they talking about a basement?
So, it's a split level, the, the garage is the ground floor-
Right.
And it has the top level, the second floor-
Right.
The top of that. There, they have a crawl space-
Uh-huh.
That is, if they build back, which is where the addition is, the backside of the lot, the slope, slopes back, and they would, they would add on to that area, which would increase, would include the garage, or would include a basement, or ground floor, ground floor. So, they're not building up, they're building back, which increase, which is dropping with the grade.
So, they'd be going past that one?
I would, I would put your attention to sheet A81, where there's a graphic that illustrates the backside of the addition. So, the front portion that is not shaded shows the existing to remain, and the back portion shows-
A1.1?
A8.1.
Did staff talk to them about putting in a two-car garage?
They have a tandem two-car garage, that is part of the proposal.
Yeah, it's there, but if they're gonna go 3,700 square feet, do they need more parking?
The proposal is to include a two-car tandem garage, and then they add a third surface parking-
Surface, yeah.
-aside, which is in front of the easement.
And also, there's driveway also, so there's parking in the driveway also, correct?
Uh, there's, there's driveway, but the code does not allow parking in front of the driveway, it doesn't allow you to, to block the garage door, so any surface parking has to be outside of that sphere.
Question for staff. What is the rear yard open space requirement there for this lot?
A thousand square feet.
Do we have that here?
Yes. Believe we do.
We're 10-foot, we have a 10-foot setback on the rear?
So, within the rear third of the lot, there needs to maintain 1,000 square feet.
Right.
Their new shows 1,572 square feet, so that can include the side of the property, the back, and the other side.
Okay, so it's re, so, let me understand it correctly, is the rear one-third of the yard-
Correct.
Needs to maintain a minimum of how many square feet of open, open space?
Within that rear third of the lot, there needs to be 1,000 square feet-
1,000 square feet.
Of open space.
And they, by and large, meet that requirement by way of that 20-foot easement on the left-hand side?
A, a large portion of that does qualify as 1,000 square feet.
So, the rear one-third of the rear yard, they have about, what, 1,572.3 square feet?
Correct.
If I'm looking at A1.1?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, going along with what Catherine was mentioning, the house is, appears to be very large and out of scale with neighboring houses, I was looking at the neighboring houses, and on, there's a picture here for A1.1, I was just looking up the lots, and for 307 Paramount, adjacent to the house, that square footage for that house is 1,943, 1,943 square feet. On the other side, the property, on the other side at 315 Paramount, that's 2020, 2,020 square feet.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt through the chair? Right now, we're just doing questions, I don't, we think we're doing a discussion yet, so we even, even had the applicants present, so suggestion to maybe proceed with that and then do our discussion after, if that's okay.
Are you good with that?
Sure.
Good evening, Chair, and Commissioner Minister Derek Vinn, from ICE Design, we're the engineers and architects for this 311 projects. Thanks for letting me speak tonight, and I would like to put a little touch on that particular pros, um, design, on the, the size. We went back and forth with planning staff and the owners to, to come up with a, a design that fits portable for our owners and to fit the city's requirements, and we, we were, we have an original design that went over the FAR by a, a few percent, and now, given that design, staff recommend us to be, to, to fit the project under that threshold, giving that easement, so that makes the house fairly small, and we need to come, we need to design a two-car tandem garage parking for, for this size of a home. So, in that case, we were saying, we were designing to maybe go over the FAR by slightly bit, in this case, we were a little bit over, by a little bit too much, and I spoke to the owners, and we are more than happy to reduce this to a size that the commissioners is, it's comfortable with, in giving the lot and, and the complex of the, the block, and that we're willing to work on, and we just want to know exactly where we, we should size a home in terms of size and, and how much over FAR we could design our home, and in that, I, I would like to answer any question you have for me.
I, I have just two questions. One, do you want to have encumbered parking, two-car spaces, or is that something that was just because it's required for the size of the house?
It, it was required.
Okay, so if it kept at one garage space and one uncovered space, that would be okay with the applicant?
That would be ideal.
That would be ideal, okay, and then my other question is, the downstairs area, the family room, bedroom, it looks like the entrance to that is mainly from the outside? Is that correct?
The entrance.
The downstairs, behind the gar- in back of the garage space, there's a family room and a bedroom and a wet bar, all of that bathroom, so where's the entrance and exit for that?
There's the side entrance from the street, and then there is a set of stairs, actually right here where my mouse is.
The stairs from the gar-
Um, from the mid, the split-level floor where the living room is.
Okay.
And if you turn to page A2.1-
So, there's the garage, and then it goes into the hallway, and that goes up?
Correct.
And is there a door there at all, after that hallway, or is that just open?
It's open, really, yeah. It's, it's, it's right here, man.
Right where my, sorry.
Right, I, I see it, yeah, I'm there right now, too, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have for questions.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Question for him?
Yeah. I understand that you said you would prefer one garage space. I feel that you need to have two garage spaces, that's a very busy, busy street, not as bad as Millwood, but two closed garage spaces are important, and it has to integrate with the neighborhood, and the lot is a little bit bigger than I had originally seen, it is 6,000, so you have a little bit more leeway.
Understood.
But we're generally pretty firm on the 55.
Understood.
And it, it, it needs the two parking spaces inside, there's certainly room to put it.
Is that 55 prior to the, the easement, or?
To what?
Is that 55% minus the easement, or 55% prior to the easement?
Well, we haven't talked about the easement, but yeah, 55%.
Okay.
I mean-
I think that we should, instead of giving them a number right now, we should have a discussion first before we give a consensus to the, the applicant.
Well, I think we need to get the square footage.
Looking at the design on A4.2, on the rear, south elevation of the building, there's a window there that looks very low to the ground, it's almost like a foot off the ground or less, is that, what window does that access there?
It says bedroom window.
Bedroom window. And then the, what is the floor elevation within, within that, so is that, is that window sitting higher on the wall when, inside, inside the building?
Actually, the, there's, the first, if, if you're, if you look at A4.2, maybe, that's not appropriate, maybe, A4.3? The gra, the grades for the basement ceiling-
There's the side entrance from the street and then there is a set of stairs actually right here where my mouse is.
The stairs from the garage?
From the split level floor where the living room is. And if you turn to page A two point one.
So there's the garage and then it goes into the hallway and that goes up?
Correct.
And is there a door there at all after that hallway or is that just open?
It's open really. Yeah, it's right here, ma'am.
Right where my, sorry.
Right, I see it, yeah, I'm there right now too. Okay, thank you, that's all I have for questions.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I understand that you said you would prefer one garage space. I feel that you need to have two garage spaces, that's a very busy, busy street. Not as bad as Millwood, but two closed garage spaces are important. And it has to integrate with the neighborhood. And the lot is a little bit bigger than I had originally seen, it is 6,000. So you have a little bit more leeway.
Understood.
But we're generally pretty firm on the 55.
Understood.
And it needs the two parking spaces inside, there's certainly room to put it.
Is that 55 prior to the easement or?
To what?
Is that 55% minus the easement or 55% prior to the easement?
Well, we haven't talked about the easement, but yeah, 55%.
Okay.
I mean.
I think that we should, instead of giving them a number right now, we should have a discussion first before we give a consensus to the applicant.
We need to get the square footage.
Looking at the design on A four point two, on the rear south elevation of the building. There's a window there that looks very low to the ground, it's almost like a foot off the ground or less. Is that, what window does that access there?
It says bedroom window.
And then the, what is the floor elevation within that? So is that, is that window sitting higher on the wall when, inside, inside the building?
Actually, the, there's, the first, if you're, if you look at A four point two, maybe, that's not appropriate, maybe, A four point three. The grades for the basement ceiling, the ceiling heights is plus seven-five, seven-eight. And the windows, it's probably good about two, one and a half, two feet below that. So it's right in the middle of the wall.
It just seemed odd to have a window that low sit on the ground. If it's sitting very low to the ground and someone's standing in the room, then the window would be very, like knee or waist level.
The window is, it's less than 44 inches ceiling height of the grade, the finished floor. Because it's the bedroom, so it's less than 44 inches. Maximum 44 inches of ceiling height of the finished floor.
Inside the window would come up to, the top of the window would be at eye level or five feet?
No, it will be about waist height. It depends on how, 44 inches roughly about three and a half feet, yeah.
On your sectional plan, you mentioned something about in the interior space would be on the first floor, be no more than seven foot eight inches?
Seven foot eight inches, correct.
That's finished?
That's finished.
Okay. I think by code, was it, is it seven or seven and a half, I think?
Seven and a half.
Linda? By code, is it seven or seven and a half interior, seven feet? That's the minimum?
For a room height, yes, seven feet.
Okay. I mean, it meets code, but it's kind of low, substandard, if you will. I don't know if you have any thoughts about a little bit more excavation to give it an eight-foot ceiling height, to give it a little bit more comfort space? Just a consideration, it's not a requirement?
Thank you.
Otherwise, yeah, we need to discuss a little bit about the FAR target and then let you know.
Thank you.
I think just some comments that I would have for the building and that, for the design and to make it more livable. So the, on the south side, there are, there is that very low window and then there's a slider door, but then there doesn't appear to be any other windows. So, you know, when more windows on the south-facing side would be beneficial for light and livable space. And then also on this proposed southwest side elevation, there's only a couple of windows along a really long massive side of the building. So again, southwest side, you're going to have more light during the big portion of the year. And, you know, we'd recommend lighting windows and lighting there. Also, for that southwest side elevation, there's just one long massive wall that appears to be pretty flat. If architecturally, you can break that up so that the neighbors, doesn't have to be just looking at one giant massive wall. If there's other architectural features, you can use to break that up or soften that for the neighbors. These are just some suggestions that might consider for the homeowner.
One more, if I can? Another thing is that I look at the design, especially on A four zero, it used to have a flat roof. And now you change it to a pitch roof, it's a 412 pitch roof. And you increase the ceiling, I mean, you increase the building height, overall building height by about four feet, three inches roughly. So instead of, you know, what we discussed a little bit earlier, you need more excavation in order for you to get more ceiling height on the first floor. Perhaps you can consider raising up the house a little bit by a foot. But then you change it back to a flat roof, you don't have to necessarily increase the overall height of the structure, but you can still maintain or be able to gain a certain amount of interior space, interior ceiling height by doing so. I mean, I guess, when I look at the plan, it looks like you're doing quite a bit of excavation from the front towards the back in order to create a new basement.
Correct.
Right, so I would imagine a significant amount of framing would need to happen anyway in order for that to happen. So raising the house by another 12 inches may not be such a big deal after all, given all the exercise that you had to put in anyhow, but just a design consideration.
Okay, thank you, I'll work with the owners on it. Thank you.
Shall we, anything else for the applicant? Any other questions?
You might have shown it, I didn't go to that detail. But you have to show the windows on your property compared to the windows of the people on the other properties. So then you are going to be excavating in the back. No. That's what I was, sorry, I didn't explain it correctly. I didn't think there was really enough room. And you said it's only seven feet to be legal, a room? Or a hallway?
Right, but I would have to defer that to the building department because plant, seven feet is what we use to determine a single floor. But I would defer that to the building department as they deal more with the interiors.
Because I thought eight feet was the legal amount, except if it was like a hallway or something.
To my understanding, building code seven-six for habitable space, habitable rooms and seven feet for non-habitable like bathroom, closet, hallway.
It's my understanding that the building code, California building code requires minimum seven feet. Certain jurisdictions have higher limits like seven-six and others, but definitely not eight. In order for it to be a habitable space and, you know, the applicant already acknowledged that the window ceiling height can be no more than 44 inches above the finished floor in order for that to be a bedroom for secondary egress and fire exit, so. But those are building, department will do the plan check as they go along. Seven-eight is legal, it's a little low and then there are ways to make it a little bit better. As we discussed earlier.
Questions, any more for him?
The, on the, on the side of the house with the PUC easement, there's an access door for the lower building. Is there a planned landing there also in a walkway? Is it, is there a walkway along that side of the building?
No, this is a flat area, we're not, we were not able to build anything above the easement.
Isn't it required to have a landing outside that door?
That area, it's a, it's a flat area. The entry, there will be a step into the property, but there's, it's just one step, but it's a flat area. Unless we're stepping down into a different elevation, but there, it will be a step into the property.
From unpaved, unpaved?
It will be paved, it will be paved.
Okay.
One last thing, sorry. You'd be asking for an exception no matter what, one way or another, even after the redesign. It would be nice if you can just let us know what is the, other than the obvious, right? The fact that there's an easement there. If there's any other extraordinary circumstances that exist, you know, throughout your design that you want us to consider.
Main thing would be the easement, the second thing would be the parking issue, two parking, giving the split level homes. So that would be one of the difficulties on us designing this property and make it so that the owners will have a comfortable homes, giving a larger family size. And the reason why we designed a four-bitroom, because there's our parents, property owners and the husband and two kids.
Thank you.
Is that it, no more questions for him?
I would tend to think that it should be integrated with the roofs.
Do we have a public, is somebody here going to be speaking?
Are we done with questions for him?
If we're done with questions.
Are we done with you? Okay. Do we have any speakers list for this, anybody want to comment?
I have a name because I English no good. My house is my daughter and the son-in-law.
Okay, can you, can you go to the microphone?
My son-in-law and the daughter is a child, know whom. My, the house is my daughter and the son-in-law. So know whom, I don't know their point. So back here, my son-in-law and the daughter, then maybe show their, a point. I don't know, because I just listen, I English no good. Yeah, because I think water is very, very important for me. I, in the yard is raining, the water is here in my yard. So I said water is very, very important, is how is.
One second.
What is your address? Your house address?
I think I might be able to help clarify if I can. So this woman is the mother of Haidong Wu who lives at 315 Paramount, this is next door.
Oh, yeah.
If you can look at the plan, it's to the, the upper side, yes. I believe that she was not intending to speak, she was here to listen because her, her son and daughter could not be here today. What she is concerned about is the slope. We did send out a proof of neighbor consultation form to that address and it was returned in support of the project. This is the first that I'm hearing about the concern of this. I expressed to her earlier today at the, at the hearing that the work that's done on the project site at 311 would remain confined to that site. It would not impact the adjacent property in any way. There are conditions of approval that ensure that through the Public Works Department, the Building Department and through some of the Planning Department's conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're done with the public comment then? Okay, then discussion? Direction, help?
I'll, yeah, if I can talk, I'm, if I can talk, until I can, yes. No, I'm good, I still have the cough drop in my mouth. So it seems, it seems that right now there's a, like mentioned at the, like mentioned at the beginning that it's, even if you add that back in, that we're at 65%. What I'm wondering is that definitely, it seems like the applicants are open to designing it smaller. If they are, I mean, if you take 55% of the 60, 80 square feet, ignoring the easement, that takes you to 33, 44 square feet to be 55%. So if they were to design it to 33, 44 square feet, you actually only need two parking spaces, right? So they could get away with just one garage covered and then they have, on the side, there's plenty of space already, there's a, I looked at the picture and there was already space for a car. So they could have two parking spaces, bring the house back in because it's only one car garage and make the house smaller. So that would be one suggestion. And definitely, I concur with Commissioner Feng about the ceiling height, that that would make it a more comfortable, attractive place if you could raise the ceiling heights a bit. And on that first floor, and maybe it doesn't have to be 412 pitch, it could be a 312 or a flat or something. It's already only 22, the height is only 22 feet to begin with. So I think you have some room to be able to move up, you know, I don't know if you want to go full 30, but, you know, a foot, two feet more and that would make it more attractive. So I, I mean, I personally, I would be comfortable with that if they can, you know, design it with just the one car. Having a two-car tandem garage, I don't like tandem garages, that's just a personal thing, which is fine. But I'm just saying, if they're designing it, then they, if you bring the house in smaller to begin with, then that already takes care of the FAR requirement. And then you only need two-car parking, so you only have one car garage, if I'm correct in that. And that would simplify actually the whole building process and make it more efficient. So I just feel like that would kill several birds with one stone. That's my suggestion.
The extra tandem parking spot would be for things that are always there. I mean, everybody needs space for things.
I get, I'm just saying that the requirement for that third parking is at 3,500, that's the cutoff. So if they're sticking with the 55%, assuming that we're letting that easement area back in, it goes to 33, 47, so 44. So if they were to reduce it, then that reduces that requirement, it lessens the burden on the owners in terms of not, that's why I asked that question. Do you want, is it that you wanted two-car covered or is it that you're required to? And it sounds like they'd prefer to just have one. So it would solve that, it would, you know, they would have more room to work with without having that extra garage that they need to have. And they do have sufficient space on the side for that uncovered parking, so.
Has anyone been out to the house at all?
Yes.
Have you?
Yes.
On this picture, where this belongs, can you take a look at it for me, please? So all of this belongs, where does their lot finish?
I'm not sure where.
Well, you're looking at.
Is that the rear property?
It looks like the easement for the right away, PUC right away.
Right, they have 10 feet.
I guess that's a Seville Court or something back there. Madrid? So they sit way low.
The property is 95 feet deep.
Where's the front of the house? Where's the front of the house?
So you're looking across the fence from the easement.
And then this is, where's the easement, right here?
Right, right.
The easement is on the side of the property?
I'm sorry?
The easement is on the side of the property? You're looking at the rear of the property?
Yes, this is the rear.
So there's, there's a 10-foot setback. And then there's another easement that I believe is five feet from the rear property line. We typically try not to assume that a fence or a retaining wall would be the property line. So I wouldn't feel confident looking at that picture and determining what, what the depth is.
Yeah.
I can refer to the plan.
They are way lower than a cul-de-sac.
There is a drop, yes, the slope is going down.
So the retaining wall is theirs or the other people, you don't know?
We did not approach the rear of the property.
Anybody else have comments to make?
Yeah, so I did look at the neighboring properties adjacent on the same side of the street. And this, with this expansion even up to, if we were to go to the maximum FAR of 33, 40 square feet, that's still much larger than the adjacent properties. 319 Paramount is 23, 70 square feet. The other two neighbors on each side is 20, 20 square feet and 1,943 square feet. So it is important to stay within the city code for FAR. And even by allowing the maximum FAR, it's still much larger than the neighboring properties. I would approve it up to the maximum FAR, but no more than that to maintain consistency with our city planning.
Just to clarify, the numbers that staff uses are numbers that are provided by the county's assessors' numbers. Those typically do not include the square footage for garages. I'm not sure what the source of the adjacent properties that you're providing would be.
Just on a Zillow website, yeah, right.
It's without the garages, so we would have to. That's without the garages, so we would have to assume that there's an additional 400 at least to each one of those properties.
That would be the maximum, neighboring properties would go up to 27, 70 square feet. Uh, so, uh, like I was mentioning, I would approve it up to the maximum FAR and then not more than that to keep in consistent with our city planning guidelines.
All good? Yes, I, I do agree that we should give them a rabbit to chase, meaning certain parameters so that it's a little easier for the property owner and the applicant in the next go-round, so that they don't have to guess around what we would or would not allow them to, to put, to apply for in the next go-round. Um, 55% based on the gross lot size with yield 33, 44, and I think I'm okay with that. With a one-car garage and, and off-street parking, I think would be reasonable. We should also come to some sort of consensus in terms of what the seat, what the, um, the height of the building that we will allow. That way, when they redesign it, they can, um, they can address those things as well. Currently, it stands at 22 feet, 2 inches. I'll be okay up to 23, just given the additional 10 inches for the first floor. That would be sufficient. But, but that's just my proposal.
30.
Up to 30.
Up to 25 if it's a flat roof, it's a pitched roof over 312, then it's 30.
Okay, fair enough. Um, I mean, obviously they have to come back for design review the second round. Yeah, that's, those are my comments.
I, I like them. 55% at, at the gross 60, 80?
Yes, 30, so that would yield 33, 40, including garages.
And I'm fine with the one-car garage too. I mean, you're gonna have a nice bigger house, you got a lot of crawl space, you could probably throw some stuff under there if you really had to.
Yeah.
I'm okay.
We have consensus, motion?
I think it'll be cheaper too, right? Because you don't have to build back so much, you don't have to excavate it as much, so. And it would leave more backspace, so, in the yard, so I think overall.
I think the next question, I think we have the applicant is, if you can.
If they would be.
How much time do you need to get it redesigned? Should we postpone it or continue it to a date certain?
Well, question for staff, is, is it, if they're gonna draw a whole new plan, are we continuing this or are we saying no to this one and please come back? What's the proper procedure?
We can continue to a date certain, um, however, I would have no problem re-noticing this.
Will that slow things down immensely for them?
You wouldn't have to re-notice it, would you?
But if we continue to a date certain, then they don't have to. If we continue it to a date certain, so this will serve as a notice. How much time do you need, Mr. Applicant?
Um, approximately two to three weeks. And that leads us to the holidays and the things to Christmas policy. It's, it's as soon as in January, sometime in January.
First meeting in January?
I would like to consult with the Development Director, because there are development projects that they may have scheduled that I'm not aware of.
Well, to avoid a lot of noticing, why don't we do a date certain and then it can always be changed or extended?
It, it would likely be two months out is my guess.
February 4th? Is the.
They're basically just gonna dig out and fill in the back of the top floor for the second unit.
So the earliest we could bring you back with the unit looks like on February 4th. That would be the first meeting in February, and so what we'd like to do is if it's okay with you and your, and your client is to establish that date certain for you.
Okay.
If you're able to do it by then, then we can bring you forward if we're able to, if it fits within the counter of the bank business we have at the city. Um, if not, what we could do then is continue to another date certain to give you an exact date and not have to look through the re-noticing, is what we're trying to do.
That, that would be great, yeah, February 4th. That would be great, yeah.
Tentatively, thank you.
Okay.
We'll be able to confirm with you as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Also suggesting in the comments about the southwest side elevation. Um, it's very massive in one flat wall. If you can do something to break that up and also show the layout of the windows in relation to the neighboring windows so that you have some privacy, maintain privacy and not look directly into each window.
Okay, thank you.
So, do we need a motion or we're just continuing this?
Yeah, we have to motion to continue.
To continue, okay.
And do we have a consensus? Because I know we, I, I think we've had different people talking and I, I think we need to have a consensus, not just.
Okay, so are we okay with 55% of 60, 80?
Of 68?
60, 80, 60, 80.
Including the easement area.
So go to 55 without and, and.
Pretending the easement's not there. Just the whole lot.
And that would be about 33?
300, yeah. Yeah.
Well, one vote doesn't make a difference.
And are we okay then with a one-car garage and extra parking outside?
I am not happy with the one-car garage, but.
Microphone.
I'm not.
But, okay, alright.
I'm okay with it.
And if they go under 33, 44, that's, it's the requirement, they're meeting the requirement, because it's 3,500 is where you need the extra one. Extra space, so.
Alright. And then height of the building, I'm not, I'm not particular. I'm, I'm okay if it. Yeah, that's, that's makes me happiest, staying inside the guidelines is okay with me. So if it gets a little higher, that's okay, if it goes down, you know. Depending on the, I mean, even if it go back to a flat roof, they've still got two and a half feet to work with.
Correct.
So.
And it will still be within the design guideline.
25 feet for a flat roof.
Which does not require any variance or exceptions.
Depending on what they do with the redesign, we'll see how built, how tall the building needs to be.
Is your mic? I thought we were done. Sometimes we think from the front of the house what it looks like, but sometimes you need to remember that the people behind it have to look at it too. So I think it's important to look at both sides.
Or we can do this, if they increase the heights, we can ask the applicant to get new consent form from the neighbors. Do we want to do that?
Good, okay. She says they're gonna re-notices it, they're gonna see the plans?
Potentially would have to re-notice.
Okay.
Okay.
Why do they have to re-notice?
We have to re-notice the meeting different, different from the public hearing. So a public hearing is a special ad, we have to do the legal ad in the newspaper versus noticing. So if we do a date certain, we don't have to go pay the $700 and have to re-notice it to the newspaper. Uh, but we do have to, sorry. Yeah, so we redo the neighbor consultation forms as well as the noticing for 300 feet where we go out. That, that does increase time.
Alright. Still have a chance to come back.
Nobody, yes.
Alright. So are we okay with those?
I thought you did.
Alright, we, we have a motion, can we have a second?
Motion to, um, to continue it to February 4th, subject to all the conditions that we just discussed in terms of maximum FAR, heights. The garage.
Second.
Nice, Cliff, when we say substitute, that's what the request is for them to bring back, they're gonna come in, right?
Right.
They're gonna be val- you're gonna be evaluating what they bring forward, but then based on that recommendation.
Correct.
Yes, based on recommendations.
Shall we vote?
Okay, vote. Alrighty, we're gonna see you on February 4th.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for being flexible.
I will go quick, please, Dave, for this next item.
Okay, we have, we have another item on the agenda, it's new business and it's the Planning Commission work plan. Review, amend as necessary and recommend approval of the work plan for fiscal year 2018, 19. Tom?
Chair Davis and members of the Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight on the fiscal year 18, 19 work plan for the Planning Commission. And for our audience or for those that might be listening to the MCTV, uh, uh, broadcast, this, the Planning Commission consists of five members appointed by a majority vote of the City Council. Members must be residents and registered to vote and normally will serve a four-year term as planning commissioners with the city of Millbrae. As stipulated by California law, the Planning Commission advises the City Council in developing and drafting land use and planning legislation, including the general plan, specific plans, and implementing ordinances such as the zoning code. The Planning Commission also makes recommendations to the City Council regarding land use, reviews proposed developments for consistency with the zoning code and the general plan of the city for, and as well for compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and environment. In addition, the Planning Commission forms a quasi-judicial function by deciding whether particular projects or requests presented meet the requirements of the general plan, zoning ordinance, and/or state law. Decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council. So that's the construct by which the Planning Commission functions as a recommending body as well as a quasi-judicial body for actions related to land use within the city of Millbrae. And as such, our City Council has asked for staff to work with the Planning Commission to bring forward a work plan for fiscal year 18, 19, which we are now finally able to do. Um, that work plan was provided for you in your packet. Um, you should have a staff report that describes the fiscal year 18 work plan. And I would like to describe how staff came forward with the five different tasks that you see on that work plan itself. Uh, back around June, or I believe it was June or July of, pardon me, of 2018, the City Council took action and they essentially adopted uh, the priorities for each of the committees and commissions within the city of Millbrae. And for the Planning Commission, they, they brought forth two, uh, two priorities or two goals, what we, what we then term as tasks under the work plan. So those first two tasks were provided for us and were adopted by the City Council. In addition to that, um, I believe it was the last page that we included on, in your packet, under the, uh, uh, where it shows the different five tasks, and there's a page that describes, it says Planning Commission at the top, and it lists essentially what are the council priorities, uh, for the year. And what we did was we took a look at those council priorities and we took a look at which ones were germane to the work that the Planning Commission does and also the work that we know that the Planning Commission is currently doing, that they're working with the Planning Commission on. And then, uh, Sam and I, we, we met and so basically staff crafted these three additional tasks that you see, tasks three, four, and five, as suggested tasks for our work plan for fiscal year 18, 19, based upon, of course, what councils directed us to do. Those three tasks you see, which I've lost. They relate to, I know this, that task number, uh, where'd it go? I've lost it. I've lost my page, Sam, I apologize. Do you have one for me? There we go. So, uh, the third plan, the third task that is on long-range planning, um, essentially that is for what you know as our current general plan updates, we have a general plan update, we have what used to be the, the council goal or priority actually refers to the PDA, in that we've changed the name of that plan, it used to be called the Priority Development Area Specific Plan. Uh, that's been named now the El Camino Real and Downtown Specific Plan, they're one and the same. And so our, our, our goals as relates to task three are for those long-range planning documents, which also does include the Active Transportation Plan. And to give you a little bit of an update on those, uh, the city manager has recently reassigned me as the project manager for those three. So I'm the new project manager for the general plan update, for the Active Transportation Plan and the specific plan. And, uh, we will be working to bring those for final adoption. We believe, we're, we're gonna re-task out, um, our schedule, but as it stands now, we believe that we'll have all of them adopted by September of 2019. And that would include all three of those plans, as well as what's called the Climate Action Plan for the city and then the SEQA or the environmental work, so the EAR would be also ready to be adopted. That brings us into task four. Task four is specifically from the council priorities, and task four relates to the fees that would be associated with or the development impact fees that we will need to have determined and then adopted by council. That would be applied to developments that would fall under or that would be inside of the geography of that new El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan. So to say that in maybe a more clean fashion is, is that we are directed to work to develop impact fees similar to or equal to those that you've seen in the MSASP area that were adopted, uh, I believe it was back in 2017, March of 2017. And then task number five, uh, we've been working so recently, I just worked to, to draft, uh, a, a draft ordinance for what we're calling our wireless communication facilities. And so as you know, we've had a lot of, of, uh, back and forth, if you will, with, with one particular applicant as it relates to this new 5G technology. Uh, there is new, there are other state laws, as I understand it, that have, that are out there that we need to get a better handle, a better understanding of. But in the meantime, we have now put together, uh, we still have to finalize it and then we'll get it to legal counsel, but we have task five, which will be to develop and have adopted a wireless communications ordinance such that staff will be able to, uh, better analyze and to bring forward to you, uh, I think, uh, uh, a better recommendation that we can all move forward with these projects a little bit in a more cleaner fashion. And so with that being said, what we would like to ask of the Planning Commission tonight would be for the Planning Commission to let us know, you know, whether or not, how you feel about these three tasks themselves, whether or not you have any comments for us as it relates to these tasks that we either have come up with in relation to the way that we gleaned from the council priorities. And then in addition to that, if there are any additional, um, tasks, and I know of one, uh, I believe that, that Chair Davis will be bringing up, but if there's other tasks that any other members of the Planning Commission might feel that would, that are germane, that fall within the purview of what we do, um, that are, are, you know, that are reasonable, attainable goals or tasks that we might be able to accomplish within the fiscal year or outside, a little bit outside this fiscal year, given where we're at in the fiscal year itself today. And so with that being said, I'd like to take any, you know, I'd be happy to take any questions or to open up the discussion with, uh, as the chair so desires.
Do you have any questions?
What'd he said?
Or do you want to go straight to comments? Okay. Alright. Okay. Alright, who wants to kick it off?
You mentioned that you, I guess you had a.
The only thing that, big thing that I would love to see happen, and I don't know exactly if it's just a new task, which I hate to dump more work on you, or if it is somewhere in task two, in just in terms of, of identifying updates to zoning and, and whatnot. Something for ADUs, for accessory dwelling units. The new state rules, like to be sure that we can give clear guidance to our residents what they can and can't do and make it easier for them and for us to get more housing, that's the ultimate goal of that. So if that, somehow that can get worked in here, I would be thrilled to death.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think, I think given the, uh, where we're at with the whole ADU with the state law, it certainly, uh, Chair Davis, it certainly falls within task two. However, I would agree with you and I would suggest that it probably would warrant its own task, I would maybe create a separate task six, such as we have for the wireless communication ordinance. Um, and that way it's, it's sort of on the forefront, it's something that's, it's in our face, it's not just sort of buried with the task two, is what I would recommend.
I like it. Does anybody?
With Petrovich, with, um.
Okay.
We had done a lot of work and he had done a lot of research on it.
Okay, so staff would be happy to take a look and go back and research what we have in our network and take a look at what Mr. Petrovich had put together for us. And then also, uh, have to take a look at the way the new state laws have read, because a lot changed on us, I think, as of the first of this year.
Yeah, you might check, I, I think some of the questions that had come up at that time is uh, when you legalize the ADUs, what happens to your, your tax base?
So I, I would agree to.
Tax base as, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Tax base as in the property value?
The basis for where, by which is calculated?
Property taxes.
Would just be legal square footages, right, wouldn't that be?
It was a big question when it came up last time.
I think I have that document somewhere.
I would love to get, yeah, if, if you have it.
Because I remember looking it up recently, yeah.
I'd be, I'd be very happy to get that from you, Commissioner Joe.
Now that I said that, I'm, I'm nervous whether I can find it or not.
Oh, I'm sure I could find it, I was just taking advantage of the offer.
And I, and I would agree, I think that's a great. No, I remember looking it up, because we were talking about ADUs and I wanted to look up what we had worked on. Um, and then there are a bunch of sites now that have different city, what they've done and what they've found to work and not work, so I think that, that should be, that would be good. But I would agree, I mean, not, not going into discussion, but definitely I think having ADUs would be great. I, I know it's been brought up regarding the design review guidelines, I think Commissioner Feng has brought that up before and Commissioner Wong about having, maybe looking at our guideline, design guidelines and design review, um, just to be a little more, so I don't, I guess that would be in two.
I, I hate to say it, but I think I would fall, I would go back to the way I responded to, to Chair Davis's request for the ADU is that, I, I. to Chair Davis's request for the ADU, is that I would call it out, I would call it as a separate task, yeah. It's something that's been on staff's mind as well, and so I have no problem putting it out there as a separate task for all of us.
Okay. And another that I would like to do that we've talked about, and I know we have so much on our plate, but it's that second floor addition streamline, the administrative review.
Can you help me understand, though? I do recall this, I know that there was, prior to my time coming on with the city, that there was an effort by which I believe we were actually streamlining it, was the understanding, and we were trying to do that, and effort, and not having to bring, let's say, so many projects forward, where they fit under a certain umbrella, 500 square, there was a certain number of caveats, let's say.
Right.
I just want to make sure I clearly understand what it is. I don't recall exactly what the request was, as it relates to what we're going to be analyzing.
We just wanted to review that ordinance again, so because that, so that ordinance, I think it was an ordinance that we had passed, was to allow for, if it is under 500 square feet on the addition, then it could just be approved at the staff level, at the desk.
I think it was an ordinance.
It was something, though. We passed something, yeah.
Through the chair, it was an ordinance that was adopted, and it basically directs staff, when there's a second-story addition that's under 500 square feet, staff will still review the, take a submit, receive the application, the materials, will review, do the design review, and make sure it meets all the development standards, but it will be done at a staff level. It does not require a planning commission. And that was adopted, and that's currently what the planning staff uses when we get those type of applications in.
I think what would be helpful is, we had one house that was a problem. What we don't know, was that just an outlier? Or have you passed through dozens of beautiful projects that never had a problem, and we don't know? I think we just basically need a survey of how many times was that rule put into place?
Thank you. Very clear, very clear, thank you.
Start with that, then we can see if it's working or not, if it actually-
Right. So that was when we passed it, it was, we weren't sure at that time, and we're, not weren't sure, but we said, okay, let's try this, and then we want to go back and evaluate it and see how it's working, and we never got to do that. And then we had that one situation where it kind of went awry, and so it could be that maybe just tweaking that a little bit to tighten it up might be good to look at it.
Is, couple of bedrooms, if you wanted to.
I'm sorry. I think having staff a little bit more power to approve smaller addition, I think it's a good thing to have. I think the last time, if I remember correctly, there's a certain amount of serial permitting that got involved with that project, and that's why there's, that's why there's an issue. And, you know, built into that mechanism of that staff level approval on less than 500 square feet, second-story addition, there's also an appeal process being put in as a mechanism for fail-safe, you know, effectively, which I think it works well in the end, because, you know, had it, if the neighbor really have a problem with it, they can appeal it either to the planning commission or to the council in the last case. So I think the system that was designed, was working by design, as design, so it was fine, but I think the serial permitting part would be-
I think we're almost moving into a discussion-
Yeah, we're not trying to dis-
We just, I think what we need is a bit of data, so that we can reevaluate, say, 500 square feet is the right amount, maybe it should be four, and then there are other tweaks to make, but I think we just need you to first come back with some data, tell us how-
Just analyze and see what's happened, what have we looked at, how many projects have come forward, what really, how has this been implemented? Has it really been a problem, or was it a one-off, like we may suspect?
And then is there anything we can do to improve it?
Yeah.
Right? What he may be saying might be something, if it was headed down that road, perhaps improvement.
Sure. Potentially could.
You could have just a-
A summary or an update, how it's been, how the policies, you know, how it's been-
Many have been approved that way.
A survey.
So can that be-
Be glad to do that, that I would consider task two, and here's why. Is that, that's something that we've done before, that we're going to be analyzing, looking at, number one. And I also would say that we don't want to have too many tasks. I'm happy to, you know, add tasks in here, but at the same time, I know we did hear from council a little bit that, you know, we want to make sure it's reasonable, or it's feasible to obtain, so.
So I guess that there's the question there. I mean, there are things that we'd love to see that happen, that may or may not actually be our job, it might just be things that the planning department is doing. So you go ahead and push back when it's not.
Okay.
What's not really appropriate for a planning commission work plan.
Sure, okay, sure, sure.
Right? So that's something we, obviously, we still want to see that happen, but maybe it's not a task for us.
Yeah.
Maybe it's somewhere in your-
It's our, it's our bellywink. We hear loud and clear that's something we need to bring to the foreburner, that's what we need to bring back, but it does really fall, I mean, it does really fall into task two, so I think it fully fits within the task and the purview of the planning commission.
Is that our job, or your-
That's our, that's your job, you've now directed us that you've wanted this information, and now it's our job to bring that back to you, so that's our job.
Okay, and we want it this year.
Okay.
We do? Yes? Yeah, okay.
We will work, we will work to do that.
Anybody else?
A small task I would really like to see, revision for signage ordinances for these larger developments, for any large commercial developments, such as bar station and TOD projects, or even mixed-use multi-large residential developments, just to have requirements for signage and postings about the project, and pictures or architectural displays, so that the public in our community is more aware of what's going in, or what's planned for-
And we do, so it makes me a little bit nervous, because we do require that, and that does occur as part of the process. I know that you had spoke with me before, I think you had driven one of the sites early on, and some of that signage was not up. And I know at that time, Sam responded that we do sometimes have, you know, the signs fall, or people take them, so, you know, staff does do their due diligence, where we have to go, we put a sign, a physical stake in the ground there, we've noticed, we'll notice three adjacent properties or light poles, that there's a project nearby, then we also do the 300-foot noticing, and then in the case of when it's a public hearing, when it requires that legal noticing, then we take that extra step to put it in the newspaper.
I noticed that even for like the TOD2 project, when I went to the bar station, they have this similar project, you know, commission, planning council meeting notice, but I would like to see requirements for like a bigger display.
Got it.
Like a picture, and, you know, even some elements such as design, construction dates, or developer.
And that, so it sounds like, though, what you're speaking of is maybe taking a look overall, our overall noticing procedures, and maybe not, you're not speaking of signage per se, as like of the building of Gateway, but you're speaking of signage, or public noticing is maybe, I think, what we're speaking of, right?
Well, yeah, public noticing, and also displays, so people can see what it'll look like in the future, or just architectural concepts.
Is, I'm trying to make sure it fits in there, is that a-
That would be in our task two, yeah. That would be in our task two, as far as us looking at our policies and looking at when we do update those policies, is-
Can that be put into, update to our design review guidelines? So, under one bullet point is, big massive projects have to have billboard-sized displays?
I would more like to take a look at the municipal code, I don't see why not, yeah, I would like to double-check to see how we have it, but yes.
So maybe it could land inside that already established bucket.
Yes. It certainly would fall into two to me, but also could, we could, like you said, we could also-
That'd be great for public outreach, making sure the community is informed, and then they have a chance for more engagement, and involvement in these projects. Also, I heard that some of the other commissions or committees are developing plans, such as bike, bike plans for the city, and, you know, working on tree planting ordinances, so it'd be good to include our commission to be able to review drafts of those development plans.
Oh, yeah, as always, so there, I know, I think what you're speaking of is our Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, potentially some of those tasks, I know that specifically they've had some interest in, although there, there's no, this, I'll be bringing forward the Active Transportation Plan to the planning commission, so we're working on that as one of our tasks. The other committees are not at this time.
It's just so that when we look at these projects, like the Chevron Station there, we can recognize these elements, or these other planning plans that the other committees are working on, so that we can try to make sure that their plans are consistent, and we include those elements that they're developing and looking for.
We certainly try to do our best with doing that, we'll continue to do so, we'll try to make sure that, make sure this planning commission knows about it, and I want to just reemphasize that you're the body that we'll be bringing that forward to.
There's one idea that I have, and I think that it's OTC over-the-counter permit, OTC approval on internal remodeling, small decks, or, you know, small first-story remodel, that type of thing, and build in some sort of appeals period before they would be allowed to get started with the construction, and have posting requirements.
You're speaking to staffs hard on that, so I'll say this, is that, you know, I was going to comment that earlier, where we were just talking about the 500 square feet, you know, that, you know, that was specifically put in place because of, you know, I think that we don't want to be a division, or the Community Development Department has a lot of work, there's just, there's a lot that comes at us, and we have a very small staff, and we've had, we've been like that for years, and I don't see us getting out of that conundrum, let's say, in any real quick period of time. And so therefore, I think what we've been trying to do is look at things a little bit more pragmatically, as far as, you know, what's reasonable that maybe we in the future look to modify, like you're saying, Commissioner Fung, such that we don't have to bring these forward to the commission, right? But we want to, we want to obviously be respectful to the purview of the commission, but at the same time, we want to be able to move business to the city, and we're getting such an influx of stuff that's more complicated, that those things end up languishing, because we can bring forward some of the easier projects more quickly, they're, they become a little bit easier to keep on a quicker timeframe, to a degree, with a lower number, without too many of that is. And so what I mean by that is, is that staff would like to take a look at other areas, and I know the city manager has also asked us to take a look at that, such that we can sort of streamline things, expedite stuff, get stuff through the city, and help the residents, help the constituents.
Yeah, because, you know, one of the major complaints that I've been hearing from people is that it takes too long to get a simple permit through.
Correct.
And so, you know, being able to, I think it would have to be a legislation, or is it an ordinance thing modification?
Well, we, I think the approach that we likely would like to continue with is that, so we're updating all of our long-range planning documents, right? We're doing updated general plan, which we don't do very often, that happens in decades. We're doing the specific plan, which is the second one, that's sort of trying to garner or to rein in, let's say, the development that fits the form and function of what the community and the city would like to see for the future. So, I lost my train of thought.
Take your time.
The, updating the processes as part of-
There it is. So basically, the approach that we like to continue with is, is that we're updating long-range planning documents, the next step is really go take a look at our entire municipal code. And our municipal code, I think, you know, I'd like to let maybe Sam Fielding speak to that, it can be challenging to administer, I mean, to some degree, some parts that are antiquated. You know, we have things like, we're, a lot of places like the county and other communities, they don't count garages, and so we're, we're not comparing apples to oranges, and that kind of could create some angst within neighbors in the community, that maybe it's not necessary. And so what we'd like to do is maybe take a more holistic approach, so we get that document adopted, because I know that that was our intent, is to look at redoing the zoning code, such that it meets the intent and the form of the new specific plans, and of the updated general plan, and it's also more usable, it's a more usable tool for staff. So we're happy to hear that from you.
Yeah, so I think having a way to do these over-the-counter approval, and a simple project would be a good idea. Obviously, we have to define all those criteria ahead of time, so that-
Yeah. I'm sure I think we have, maybe we could bring this back, and maybe it's not for tonight, but, you know, we, I heard that we have, what is it, seven? We had the initial five, we had two additional tasks we're adding, we have some additional tasks we've decided may not become full tasks, but we're going to be aware of them, we're going to be cognizant of them, bring them to the foreburner as best we can, and they'll fall under task two. With that being said, what, there are, there was listed for you, there were separate sheets in your packet tonight, I didn't intend for those to be in there, we were going to, we wanted to come to you first, get concurrence on what we have, and then we'll fill those out and bring back each separate task sheet, along with the overall work plan, when we come back for, when you make a recommendation on it, if you decided not to do so tonight. But I think there might be a little bit of work for us to do, bring it back to you one more time.
Sure, I think, yes.
Through the chair, I just wanted to comment on like the streamlining of the, like, small decks and interior remodeling, and those do, those are building submittals, they go to building, and staff, you know, wants to take the time to review those. There's a lot of applications that come in, where applicants state, okay, it's just replacing an existing deck. It turns out it's a new deck, it's over seven feet from grade, measured from exterior grade, so it's subject to second-floor, upper-floor setback requirements. So in order to make sure that it meets the development standards in the code, interior remodels, we're just doing an interior remodel, building cemental, turns out they're adding basement area, they're adding, they're showing area that's existing, which is unpermitted work. There's more time that's required in actually reviewing these plans as a building cemental, so I'm not sure that, like, streamlining would be, would you want to do that over-the-counter? You know, all the departments need to review the building plans, and make sure that it meets the code, building codes, you know, fire, and make sure that the work that, what's being represented in the plans is accurate, and it has been permitted, especially now with ADUs, accessory dwelling unit application requests. There, we need to take the time to do that, but yes, we definitely want to look at, you know, improving the code and making it easier to, for the public to use, and I definitely agree that that would be something that, you know, we're tasked to, and that we could do that, and that's definitely something that would be an improvement, but I'm hesitant to just say, let's do over-the-counter permits for decks and interior renovations. I think that more time would be needed to review those.
I think what I meant is that the idea of having over-the-counter permit for simple projects, obviously, we need to define those parameters as to what we quantify as small projects, that we can review in less than, say, 15, 20 minutes, over-the-counter, that we can be, that can be done in an approval process, for example. Obviously, understanding there are exceptional cases that requires more time, and those would be, you know, being submitted as a take-in, and require a full approval process. But we just need to look at that, and design some sort of, define some sort of guideline for certain small project that does not require a full-length review, that could be done over-the-counter.
And that's how I had heard it, Commissioner Fung, is that I think that Senior Planner Fielding brings up some good points, and maybe I might be missing something here, but the way I heard it from you was, there may be examples where it doesn't get, let's say, issue of the, over-the-counter, but we're calling it that because we have to bring it back for full planning commission review, and while it still may need to go to the other divisions to have them look at it and sign off, to make sure it's done appropriately to code. I believe that's what you were asking, is that correct?
I think-
Or no? No, it was not.
There's three things. I think he's saying something really super simple.
Okay.
Doesn't require several departments to look at it. Then there's obviously ones that will go to departments but never come to the planning commission, and then there's the ones that require to come here, right?
Correct, yes. That's what I heard, yes.
He's looking for the super simples.
Oh, he's looking for the super simples, okay.
Super simples.
Got it. Super simples was his request, got it, fair enough.
Generally, something small can get that done quickly.
Okay.
And move on.
Thank you for clarifying.
Just one hopefully quick one. Do we not need to include in here TOD1 and 2, finishing off the design review? Are we assuming that it's going to be?
They're almost, I mean, I didn't include them here because they, you know, TOD, some of those goals were, I believe, sort of part of the council goals last year, I know at least that getting the two TODs through, and trying to build out of the MSASP in general, I believe is the way it was characterized. I'm not sure that it's required, I didn't still recall seeing it as a council, as a council priority, and that's really where staff, we-
I think we have a full plate. Does anybody else want to add anything?
Well, our plate is full, but-
I think we have six.
I think there's-
Seven.
I had seven, yeah, seven, yeah.
And seven.
We have the design, the update of the design-
Oh, that's right, TOD, that's right, so now it's seven, you're right.
And did you need us to input anything in terms of priorities, or timelines, or anything like that?
We're going to bring that back, that's, that'll be staff's job, to fill those out for the additional, what do we have now, the additional five?
I think we got to look at your project, that survey.
Yeah.
How many they've approved, I think that's real important.
Do we have a problem, or don't we? Maybe we, maybe that was just the one goofy thing, and then everything else is just smooth sailing. We're going to find out, though.
Yeah.
That's why you go back and look.
I think that's a real-
Do a little review. Okay? All right, so you have enough?
I think we do.
All right.
More than he wants.
Thank you.
Okay. With that said, you got any more staff updates?
I do have staff update, yeah. So we had, it's not exactly what Commissioner Feng has been looking for, it's not, you know, an online permitting system yet for the public, but we are kind of excited that it's been a long time coming for us, we waited for over a year, and we went live with what's called Tyler New World, so it's a new database system for us, for lack of a better term, like a CRM that we're utilizing in the, in the code enforcement and planning and building division. And so we're excited with that, we went live with that, not this, but the last Monday. So we've had, the consultants were back out training staff, we were trying to get through some of the bugs in the first couple of days, but it's nice to have a new system by which we're not sort of combing together some of the older stuff, so that was a, a nice thing to be able to share. And then, other than that, I don't have any other staff updates for today.
So it's still in trial fix?
Oh, no, it's, it's, for us, I mean, it's, it's internal, it's not, so, Commissioner Feng, it's not like a, a portal where the public can come up and apply for a permit, it's not that type of a system. That, that type of system was not purchased, so the system was purchased about two years back, and we've been working to get it implemented throughout the city, in the different divisions that it was coming towards, and we just got it now, but it unfortunately does not include what you were looking for.
But can the public be able to log in online and view the projects, or view the status of neighbors?
Not with that particular project, no.
I'm hoping that, actually, you know, what, what some of the neighbors have been saying is that they have no idea what the scope of work for some of the neighbors is doing, who's applying for what permits. I think, you know, being able to let the public view what projects are being applied and what stage-
Yeah, that's something that I have to go back and work with our administrative staff, I mean, but that, that, that's a function, that's something that could be on a website. I mean, that, that could be data that, I know other cities, I've seen they do that, they keep lists, or they keep spreadsheets, and you could go there as a member of the public without having a portal, but we could do with the technology that we have today without, let's say, going in and doing RFP and purchasing something new. It could happen much more quickly. So maybe what we should be doing is, as staff, we'll speak to our administrative division, and then take a look at how as staff internally, we could be able to, to complete that function with our existing website.
Yeah, because that would speak a lot for transparency, and that will help reduce a lot of phone calls into our planning department as well, so that would actually be helpful in the long run.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any commission comments?
Have there been any updates on the Horizon?
Microphone?
Yeah.
Horizon 5G?
I could share a little about that and see if you would-
If you had a microphone, it'd be better.